Happy New Year to all. We are about to begin our town hall meeting in the village of Trafalgar. Let me first of all recognise the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica, Honourable Dr Irvine McIntyre, Minister for Finance and the Parliamentary Representative for the Roseau Valley constituency, Honourable Denis Charles Pemberton, Minister for Tourism and other honourable members of Cabinet, residents of Trafalgar, Watton Waven, Munprospere, Loda, Cochrane, Falcone, Shufford and Coptle and all of the surrounding areas, our listeners. A series of town hall meetings and we are here in the scenic community of Trafalgar where residents will have an opportunity to engage with the Honourable Prime Minister and other members of Cabinet as we share updates on policies, programmes, projects across Dominica and also within your community. It is also an opportunity for you to interact and for the government to listen to your feedback on matters affecting you and your country. This evening's session will run from 6 to 8pm and we will hear from the Honourable Prime Minister, the Parliamentary Representative for this constituency, Honourable Dr Irvine McIntyre and also the Minister for Tourism, Honourable Denis Charles Pemberton. Before we proceed further, let me invite Mr Ronaldson Piper to open this forum with a word of prayer. Let's all stand as we pray.
Good evening to everyone of you here today. Father, we thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your mercies and we thank you for your love. We thank you Father for the day that you have given us. Father, we as your people, we as rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for your presence, O God, this afternoon as we are about to begin this meeting. We welcome your presence here today. We pray, God, for the Prime Minister, the Honourable Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt and his government. We ask you that you will minister to them in a special way. Lord, I ask you that you will continue to give them wisdom. You'll continue to give them, um, we'll continue to give them knowledge of God as they lead this nation today in the name of Jesus. Father, I ask you, O God, that your Holy Spirit of God will continue to take control over them. And Father, even those of us who are here this afternoon, we ask you, God, that you will minister to us in a special way. Lord, we too, as your people, can work together with the government of Dominica to build our nation. We come against every plans of the enemy. Father, we know that devil, he worked that he has always does is to kill, to steal and to destroy. Father, this afternoon, we come against every spirit of confusion. We come against every spirit of division, O God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, I pray for unity over our nation today, in the name of Jesus. So Father, whatever is going to be said and done here this afternoon, O God, it will be for the liftment of our nation. So Father, today, we just continue to give you the praise. We continue to give you the honour and the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
Thank you very much for this inspiring prayer, Mr Piper. To officially welcome you and to offer introductory remarks to this town hall, I am pleased to welcome Honourable Dr Irvine McIntyre, Minister for Finance and Parliamentary Representative of the Roseau Valley constituency to the podium. Welcome, Honourable McIntyre.
Thank you very much, Copsec. Let me first recognise the Honourable Prime Minister, Dr Roosevelt Skerritt, the head table, Honourable Denis Charles Pemberton, my other Cabinet colleagues who are here with us tonight, the Cabinet Secretary, the Financial Secretary, other permanent secretaries with us tonight as well, residents of the Roseau Valley. Special welcome to all of you here tonight and to those listening on the radio and via other social media platforms. Welcome to Trafalgar and the Roseau Valley, to everyone here tonight. It's always a pleasure to have you here. The last time we were here, that was for our executive meeting, but now tonight we're here as a town hall. This happened to be the first of a series of town halls which we'll be having and, um, we are not lucky, but we are blessed and we are fortunate to be the first constituency to have the town hall in this outreach programme of the government. Now, there's so much going on that, um, we thought it wise that we have this-
We have this outreach programme so that we can get to everyone and everyone can know what's happening within the country. Um, sometimes there's so much going on, we tend to think it's almost like a secret of all these things that are going on. So we thought the best way is to have town hall meetings to get to you, explain to you what the government is doing so you can have a better idea of what your government is doing for you. And likewise in these town hall meetings, tonight we won't be long. We'll just be here till about eight, at late eight fifteen. However, we want to open it later so that you can have a night, a time to ask your little questions, give us advice, your recommendations and we can have a nice little discourse and we can engage ourselves in some meaningful contributions so that we can, all for the betterment of this country because we need your ideas and we don't just do things without your ideas. We'd like to come to you, tell you what we're doing, hear from you and then we can get to a consensus and then we can move forward from here. But, um, I'm wearing two hats tonight as your par rep representing everyone, um, welcoming everyone tonight, but also as the Minister of Finance. So there's so much going on presently and what we're doing, we're developing a modern economic infrastructure. You must have heard me mention this many times before. But in this modern economic infrastructure, we are focusing on a few things. So for instance, housing. You see how housing is such an integral part. It's one of the social determinants of health and it's such an integral part of every family in Dominica. So with housing, we know we can bring up the standard of living and the socioeconomic status of all Dominicans. To come to this constituency in particular, so we've had lots of the HRP programme in Munprospere. Presently, we have our apartments in Lily Valley. We're doing some final touches at three apartments in Lily Valley and all the recipients of these twelve apartments in Lily Valley, they've already been notified and they're just waiting for us to do. We're going to get the railings done, maybe a little paint-up job, a little stuff within the kitchen works in terms of the cupboards and then they'll be ready. So maybe by the end of this month or early next month, the people in the Lily Valley, twelve recipients, will be getting their house in the Lily Valley. Apart from that, we have the other apartments being built, as the MMC apartments in Lily Valley as well. And then from there, we'll move to the other hamlets. It's step by step as regards to housing. But nationally, we have the massive housing programme that's going on, but I'm just telling you about the Roseau Valley in particular. In terms of energy, you know of the geothermal part? Now, this is a national project. The intentions of this, of course, is so that we can have lower tariffs so your bills can be cheaper and can be less than what it is now. But apart from that, it just shows our responsibility as a country, as a government, in terms of our carbon emissions. So there is a twofold thing. One, we've been responsible in terms of carbon emissions and the greenhouse gases. But secondly, and very importantly, your bill. And thirdly, what happens from this is we become more attractive for foreign direct investment because the cost of energy is one of the major parts. If some foreign direct investment were to come here, the cost of energy to run anything is one of the major issues. So if we can cut down the cost of energy, obviously it would be more attractive to foreign direct investment. Apart from that, in terms of healthcare, I don't think we need to build any more health centres, Mr Minister, neither we need to build more hospitals. We've built enough of those, but that's just part of the modern economic infrastructure. I mentioned housing, I mentioned energy, I mentioned in the health sector. So all of these are being built and these are not just done spontaneously and these are not just done in isolation. Everything is connected together. Apart from the healthcare part, well, we are benefit of that. You have a smart healthcare centre right here in Trafalgar. So all these are the, and all of this is being done with resilience in mind. Everything that we're doing is being done with resilience in mind, whether it's housing, whether it's the energy point of view, whether it's the health centres and even in terms of education. So now we're building six new schools. Thank God for the People's Republic of China to help us in this endeavour. But one of the schools is the Technical and Vocational School that will be built at Goodwill School. Now you're wondering, why is this so? Because with all these major project, projects that we're having, we're going to need skilled and technical people. So that is where this fits in. So in terms of plumbers, electrician, electronic people, all of this will come under this, carpenters, et cetera. So, and this is to provide the human resource and the capacity for all these programmes that are going on in the country now. So, and if we move on to agriculture, you'll wonder, well, why we spending that much? So we have the agricultural science building in Potsboff. But what's the, what's the connection of this? How does this fit into the modern economic infrastructure? This is, we have a tissue culture lab there. So you're going to get higher yield in crops, you're going to get crops that are more resistant as well and all this is going to handle our food security as well because we have to address our food security. So that's where comes in. The abattoir, we spent in excess of six million dollars. But what is that? We want to cut down our food import bill. Actually, our food import bill, fifty-three percent is from vegetables, fruits, cereals, grain, poultry, et cetera. So that is the whole aim behind the abattoir. That is the whole aim behind the agricultural science building. You saw the citrus certification this week to get more resistant citrus crops. So that is where our fruits come in. That's our, and we attacking also the chronic non-commutable diseases because you see the taxes that we put on the sugar sweetened beverages. So we want you to cut down your use of this and use our fruit juices, a healthier lifestyle. But even if we were to move on, the other parts of the economic infrastructure, the tourism and the Roseau Valley is all part of this. So we developing our tourist product. The Minister of Tourism will go a little more detailed into this, but, um, all our products we're going to develop. The cable car is part of the whole stuff. Our sanctuary resort in Povidas is part of this whole stuff. That's part of all the hotels being built all over the country. And then if we were to move a little further, roads. We spending so much on roads, but we know that roads is the path to development. So you see our Boadiah to Cassibrews to Kalinago Territory and then we're going to do obviously from Bagatelle to Lubia and then we have plans to do from Yogg Valley to Sultan and then from Pocase, all the way to Boadiah. So this is a very comprehensive approach to our road infrastructure and our road network because you must have that for development. If you were to have a factory somewhere, you need a road to bring your raw material, you need a road to bring the product back from the factory. So all that fits in into the modern economic infrastructure, technology and digitalisation. So you seen farming now, open air farming, it's almost a thing of the past. We need to have greenhouses. This is why the Minister of Agriculture is spending so much into that sector, the agricultural sector, whether it's in terms of irrigation, whether it's in terms of feeder roads, whether it's in terms of greenhouses. That is the big picture that is going on here. And with all of this going on, with all of this going on, we haven't forgotten the less, the vulnerable, the less fortunate among us. So all our public assistance programme still continues. It still continues. But for you to understand all of this, you have to, but before I come to that. So you try, all of us here can remember what September twenty seventeen was like. And everybody thought that this was the end of Dominica. And some people thought that maybe we'll recover in thirty years. But just within a couple of years, we were back on our feet. Now, after Hurricane Maria and we're just recovering, then came Covid. And that just drowned us once again. But we fought well, that's why we could be the best. We managed Covid the best in the entire Caribbean region. But we fought well. So when you look at it like this and you see where we've been and with all of these projects are going on, you have to see the genius in our Prime Minister and this government. That with all of these hardships that we faced, here we have all these major projects going on. The rest of the world is wondering, how can we be doing that? How are we doing that? After being knocked out in twenty seventeen, after Covid came and knocked us again and the war in Ukraine came again and then Gaza came again and it just continues, but we still standing. And not just standing, we're moving ahead with projects that nowhere else in the region has. So these are the things you have to appreciate about what your government is doing for you. And then when comes for all of this that's going on, the bigger picture here is for us to position ourselves for the opportunities that are coming. Not just in the Roseau Valley, but the entire country. Lots of opportunities will be here. I mean, I can mention a few of them so you can get an idea. So for instance, with, can you imagine when this international airport is built? You have hundreds and thousands of tourists coming to our shores. This is why we're building all these five-star hotels. It's all connected. It's not by chance we doing those things. Everything is connected. And when all these tourists come, they're going to need the hotels, which is what we're doing, they're going to need food. That's why we're engaging in all these agricultural programmes so we can have food to feed our tourists, let alone ourselves, but to feed our tourists as well. Taxi drivers, tour operators, all of these will be part. These are the opportunities for community tourism. Not every tourist would want to stay in a hotel or Airbnb. They might want to have an experience in the village, community tourism. So those of us here, we have a little one-bedroom here, we have a little apartment attached to our house. This is where the tourists are going to be. Agricultural tourism. They want to taste your bush tea and all those things. So we have to position ourselves for all of this coming there. All the different dance groups and the cultural groups. Who will be playing, who will be entertaining our tourists? We will be entertaining them. So we have to get together in all those different ways there. All the fruits and vegetables they'll be eating. They have to come from our farms. So it's, the opportunities are so, so much for us in those regard. So we have to prepare ourselves. We keep saying that, prepare yourself, prepare yourself. You see, it's raining tonight. This is a damp area, the Roseau Valley. We're going to need flowers for the hotels. Who is planting the ginger lilies? Who is planting the anthuriums? So we have to start thinking from that point of view, how do we position ourselves to get all of this done? And Loda, for instance, okay, wet, cold. Somebody has to open the laundry in Loda. We have to start thinking of those things. Loda will definitely need a laundry. These are the business what we're talking about. So when we keep telling you to prepare, we're setting the platform, we're setting the base for you. The opportunities are going to be there. All the vendors, the opportunities are going to be there. The different spas, the restaurants. This is what's going to just push Dominica and propel Dominica. So if you ask me, Dominica is the best place to be in the region at this point in time. The best, best place to be in Dominica. And all of you would have noticed, the barrels don't come as much as they used to before because your uncles and aunties and powers and whatever abroad cannot send those barrels anymore. That is how tight it is outside there. And you all should have recognised, I think you all know that already. The little hundred dollars they could send now and then and the fifty dollars, when you call them, they tell you, I'm taking a bath to go to my third job. That's the reality of things. That's how tight it is out there. This is where the green pastures are. And you've noticed some of them who've left, they come back quietly because the grass wasn't that green out there. That wasn't that green. And the entire world is under this here. The world, it's a, it's a tough world to be in now. And with all of this, you have a government that has project after project after project that is going on. We are blessed in this country. The opportunities are there. So let us prepare ourselves. Now, and not only that, when we look at it a little further, we'll recognise that we're not, we're not spearing and we're not sacrificing on our less fortunate. I want to keep stressing this point because all the assistance we give, whether it's in education, I seen some, I've seen some of my nursing students here. I seen some of those, I seen some of my nursing students here. I can see quite a few of those that have benefited from all the education grants and all this stuff that we've been doing. And, um, it's, it's just my pleasure to welcome all of you here. And let's have a meaningful and a fruitful discussion. We won't be long tonight, as I said earlier. We're here till about eight latest, eight fifteen. But, um, we'll take some of your questions and obviously we'll get your recommendations and your ideas. And you have to look at it from the point of view that even all of us, we manage our homes. We can do everything we want at the same time. We have to prioritise. I can see my biggest dashing farmer in the valley there, Orlando, welcome. We have to prioritise, just like in a home. That's what the, that's what the government do. So that's why other people are wondering, can these people not do one thing at a time? They're doing how many things at the time? But we're completing them and we are accomplishing them because this is a government that cares. This is a government that puts people first. So you have the full confidence of this government. We have your back. Obviously, that's why you keep keeping this government in power because you know this government has your back. So with these few words, I just want to say welcome to everyone and, um, let's have a meaningful and a guided discussion so we can come to some real fruitful, the agenda forward. Let's move forward. Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Dr McIntyre, for providing some of these key highlights on developments in the Roseau Valley and across Dominica. We really do appreciate this welcome and introduction. When we think of the Roseau Valley, we think of tourism. Well, we know that the Roseau Valley is home to some of the most beautiful and accessible tourism sites in Dominica. And I'm very pleased this evening that we have with us Honourable Denis Charles Pemberton, the Minister for Tourism, who will now address us. Welcome, Honourable Charles Pemberton.
When you think of tourism, you think of the? That's it, you have to stand up proud. You have to know the assets that you have here. Good evening, everyone. I am so happy to be in the wellness capital of Dominica, a destination on its own. Let me recognise, um, the Honourable Prime Minister, Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, your hard-working parliamentary representative, Honourable Dr Irvine McIntyre, um, the Cabinet Secretary or the permanent secretaries, my Cabinet colleagues, former colleagues and the wonderful, beautiful, hard-working, committed people um, of the Roseau Valley constituency. I wanted to say most enterprising people, but I was worried the people in Sufreya hear me and send a stone my way. But you are, you are. And I just here to share with you what is happening in the tourism industry and then I will break it down to let you know how you play a key role in helping us achieve our goals in becoming a world sustainable, world-class, sustainable tourism destination. You have made me, heard me share this before. Our vision is to, to reach five hundred thousand stayover visitors, that is visitors coming by air or ferry and one million cruise visitors by twenty thirty. That is our goal. How are we going to achieve this? We had to look at the following key areas, core pillars to get us on our journey to that goal. One of the key things for Dominica is access. Many people love the hairboard Dominica, but they cannot come to the destination. These days, people don't want to stop over in another island. They want non-stop flights to a destination. So one of the key things this Dominica Labour Party government had to do is improve access in Dominica. And it wasn't too long ago, I wouldn't spend, say, spend a long time on it, that we did not even have night landing in Dominica. Whilst other islands had international airports already, we couldn't even have planes landing in the country by night. So your Dominica Labour Party government had to tackle that first problem. Once we tackled that first problem, we saw increased airlift because flights now can come after six, after sun, after sundown, planes can land. Because remember, if you couldn't land before sundown in the past, flight cancelled, that's it. You have to overnight in Antigua. And many of us, we don't want to go back to the stories of overnighting in Antigua and you want to get home and you're losing days in your vacation or missing an important meeting or funeral. And so this Dominica Labour Party government led by our visionary Prime Minister, got money from Venezuela and fixed that problem for us. And then over the years, we have made a lot of upgrades to Douglas Charles. Most recently, the extension of Douglas cars to be able to get more aircrafts in Dominica. And as a result of all the investment of the government, which PM will tell you more about, we are able to get American Airlines in twenty twenty-two. Everybody enjoying that. Is it more affordable in, in two and a half hours to three hours you're in Dominica? And then in February fifteenth, everybody know what's happening. I hope you're listening to the news. What is happening on February fifteenth? From where? That's it, you have to be proud of that. That is an achievement. Direct flight from New Jersey to Dominica, a plane holding a hundred and twenty-nine people coming straight to your island. That means more tourists for where? For you in Roseau Valley. And we're going to talk about that later because I need you, as your par rep said, to position yourselves and be ready. But we're not there yet. And so one of the key areas we had to invest in is also product development. We have identified and classified certain areas in Dominica, what they are best for. And for you in the valley, your wellness destination. You have some of the most beautiful assets in Dominica. I was doing an inventory and coming to speak to you and I'm like, wow, you maybe have all. I used to say Torres, Sufreza, tourism Mecca. But I'm saying, but I have serious competition in Roseau Valley. But it's all around wellness. You have Trafalgar Falls, Middleham Falls, Cathedral Falls. You have Watton Waven Sulphur Springs, Tigwengoso, Tia's Hot Spa. You have about six hot, hot sulphur spas in the valley. You have the boiling lake, the Valley of Desolation. Lakes, you have all the lakes in Dominica. You understand? You have trails. You have UNESCO World Heritage Site, Montualpito. So you are a critical part of us achieving our goals of five hundred stayover visitors and one million cruise visitors by twenty thirty. And so the investments we have been making is to get you ready to take advantage of those opportunities. As Dr Mac said, we have had delays with Maria, we had Covid, but now we are ready to move forward. But in spite of that, in spite of the challenges, what has this government done through the brilliance of our Prime Minister? And I want to echo this because sometimes we forget where Dominica was because I have a report there in nineteen sixty-four. I don't think the Prime Minister was born yet and I don't, I wasn't born for sure. And that report identified Roseau Valley as a wellness destination and to develop the Roseau Valley. But it took this Dominica Labour Party government to recognise the resources you have and the livelihoods that can gain from those resources to make the investments in you. That is why we built a lot of facilities and improved and upgraded the facilities you have at Trafalgar Falls. I know we have some work to finish to there, but we are making the investments so you can make more money because that is what it's all about. More people equals more money in your pockets. And that is our, our, our overall objective. And so our brilliant Prime Minister re-engineered the CBI programme, very critical because we need money because everybody doing reports, they doing research, they doing studies, but it's on shelves. Nobody have the funding to tackle it. Nobody brave like Roosevelt Skerritt to go and make friends with China and Venezuela at the time to get funding. But he did it. And that re-engineered CBI programme has done many things for Dominica and we have to appreciate that. And it is because of that brilliant move that we now have an international airport. And as I explained to you, these days, tourists are funny. They want to come straight to their destination. They have two days, four days off, seven days, five days. They don't want to waste time anywhere else, direct. And Dominica is perfectly located. So once we get our non-stop flight, the one from, um, New York, it used to take us a whole day to come to Dominica from New York. I'm getting up five AM in the morning. Now you leave at nine forty and you'll get there by, I think, is it twelve? About three hours and a half. Can you imagine that serious, um, program? Can you imagine that serious progress? So we are able to invest in international airport. And we were able to invest in the cable car project. Now, when this project started, everybody was scared. We're coming to take jobs from tour guides and all kind of stories. And you know how opposition elements work at times, they say all kind of negative things. But today, that cable car project is on the mouth of every media, major media publication in the United States and around the world. It is the talk of the tongue. And it will be part of putting Dominica on the map. Because Dominica has had, besides access, one of Dominica's biggest challenges is our name. Tall is a body Dominica, but there is Dominican Republic. And you'll hear stakeholders tell you that people are booking accommodation. And they tell them, hi, I'm at the airport. And they say, but I'm here to pick you up. And they say, no, oh, we are in Dominican Republic. They're not in Dominica. So the more, the more projects and products we have that can put us on the map, the better for us. So when you hear a country, a tiny country, is building the longest detachable cable car in the world, everybody want to know, everybody want to come, they want to see it. Doesn't mean you cannot hike to the boiling lake, no. Those of us who fit and strong, like Dr. Mark, who can walk and I have to catch up with him when I walk with him and PM, you can still hike to it and have your nice hike up. And if you don't want to do a full six hours hike, when you go up on the cable car, you can hike down for three hours. Or you can do a nice twenty minutes drive, twenty minutes on a cable car with your family, with your grandmother, with your husband, if somebody disabled, everybody will be able to access the cable car. They'll be able to go, sorry, they'll be able to access the cable car and go to the boiling lake. There are many of us in this room who have never been to the boiling lake because we're not fit enough to hike for six hours. But because of the cable car, we'll be the first, we'll be first in line. And I'm just confessing that I haven't done the hike, I just not fit enough to do six hours. My partner over there. So these investments are going to change things for you in Rosa Valley. So you're going to be going to need more tour operators because every cable car has to have a tour operator, given the story. So that is about how many cables, I think, twenty-five, thirty cables, PS? Going to have tour guide on it, so we need more tour guides. That is why we have launched a training for tour guides. Because we need more, we need about two hundred tour guides in the industry. And many of them are going to be working in Rosa Valley. We need taxi operators. We have to move people from the new cruise terminal or the existing one to the cable car project. So that is an opportunity for you now who are existing, who are taxi operator ready, certified, taxi operator to expand your fleet. You can make, we'll have a meeting soon just to discuss tourism in the valley and the cable car project. Your par rep has been asking me for us to set the date, we'll set it soon. And then we're going to have a discussion just on tourism and the opportunities for cable car because we have to get ready. The cable car project is about seventy-five percent complete and is on schedule to be completed in December twenty twenty-five, which means we don't have much time, it looks like plenty of time, but we're in twenty twenty-five already. So I'm talking about the end of the year. So you have to do your little business plans and get ready, we have to talk to you. The cable car will present their proposal to you on partnerships. So there are opportunities coming for you and the people that will benefit first, obviously, are you, the stakeholders and the residents of Rosa Valley, whether Tralfalga, Wattenwaven and the other communities. So you have to start opening your mind and saying, do we have enough restaurants? Do we have enough cafes? Because you know these US people, they like to drink coffee, some people like a lot of tea. And then we have to start talking about dietary needs. And that is the beautiful thing about the valley, you're a wellness destination. And if we work together in the valley, just think about it, wellness destination, we come here. If you like vegan, you should be able to get that in a restaurant here, why not? You have farmers in Mon Prosper, you do organic farming. So the restaurant owners buy the produce from the farmers in Mon Prosper. They prepare it, everybody know if you want vegan, if you like pork, if you like grilled, if you like fried, you can get it, we have our menus out. So you link up with the restaurants, so when we do a tour, you go, the taxi operators, you get your food from there, they bring the tourists at your restaurant, you get something to eat, you have a bath, a Tig Wenglo Show, Tia's Hot Spa. Because a lot of visitors these days are looking for authentic experiences. People no longer just want to sit in a hotel and sit down by a pool or go on the beach. They want to have cultural experiences. And that is the beautiful thing about Dominica. Our tourism was not developed on mass tourism, it was developed on community tourism. So every community in Dominica has something to offer and you have plenty. So when the people come there, they want to know what is unique about Rosa Valley. And I listed so many things that are unique only to you. So you can plan so many different tours with all the attractions you have to entice tourists, make them stop by a restaurant to eat and relax. They can go by my friend there in his river cafe? River Rock Cafe and have a beautiful meal next to the river. And then you can teach them about your herbal teas, there are so many herbs here. I visited one of your herbalists here and you know, you're telling me about the importance of keeping eating healthier and using our local produce and vegetables. So you can have a tour there, meet the herbalists, get a wellness package, link up with Airbnb or hotel. And that is a package, that is what people are interested in. So we have to have linkages, we have to work together. This is a time for coming together. It cannot just be, I have my own thing, I do my own thing, it doesn't work anymore. Everybody wants a package, you want an exciting experience, you have it to offer. But what we have to do is work together to see how we have and link up and create those packages to entice those stories. So we can post, we can post about a tour, a day in Rosa Valley, what you're doing a day in Rosa Valley. And we actually have a video on the community tourism where we did a day in Rosa Valley, which received many views. So, but there is so much to do here that we must have a separate meeting for tourism to see how we create those packages. And the beautiful thing, the government is so serious about that, we already have a consultant on island who's going to help us and come back and have that stakeholder consultation with you to hear from you, get the ideas, we put the packages together. But you have to continue the effort, you have to promote your properties, you have to share videos, you have to post. We're not marketing enough. But all that we will discuss with you, will empower you, will train you, will leave you by yourself so you can increase your revenue. Because at the end of it, all, after all that investment Labour Party is making during difficult times, you have to make more money, you have to be able to take care of your children. And that is where the resilience coming and that is where the sustainability comes in. Because the money will be circulating in the Rosa Valley communities. And that is what I want to see and we want to see in Dominica. So there is a lot that you have and you have to appreciate. And so you are the wellness destination of Dominica. And I want you to prepare yourselves for that meeting. And the other beautiful thing about you is your hotel development. Look at the Sanctuary Eco Resort, beautiful project. You go to sleep and you wake up in a garden, flowers all on top of the rooms. Where in the world, very few places in the world have that kind of experience. So everything about you has been tailored to wellness, even your hotel. Even your hotel. And that's why I say to you, the CBI is so important because if it wasn't for the CBI, you would not have had a hotel in the valley, although we have had reports since nineteen sixty. But the CBI on, we were able to raise funds to invest in the hotels. And we have many more upgrades and investments to do. But this is your time, this is your time to ask questions. So I don't want to take up all your time, we will have our meeting. And I want all of you to show up again like you did tonight to support your par rep. Because I will say to you, I will not just say you have the one of the most caring parliamentary representatives, but you have one of the most caring man in Dr. Irving McIntyre. I really want to thank you for giving him to us. Because I know it's demanding for him to be a doctor and to have patients to care for, to run the Ministry of Finance and manage Dominica and still be there for your constituents. It's very demanding. And I don't know how Doc does it, but he makes the time to even listen, if I have a call, if somebody seek Doc what to do, what not to do, he makes the time to come. I say, boy, what a man, what a great man you have. And I know sometimes you go through challenges, you know, and we all go through challenges. I always tell people, I was talking to my pastor today and I said, God tell David he would become king. But was it an easy journey for him? No, look at all the challenges David had to go through to go through the front. So we will have challenges, but the end result, the thing we are working for is greater. And that is what the Dominica Labour Party under our visionary leader has done with the investments. Poco by poco, little by little, we are building a dynamic economy. You may not feel it today, you may not feel it today. But my friend, my talk, I don't tell you, boy, more people are discovering Dominica and he's happy. And I am happy because the results are there to show that we have received the most visitors in Dominica ever last year. So we are growing. We have received the most cruise visitors since twenty ten last year and we are growing. So our end is greater. We just have to be a little patient, we have to be understanding and we have to support our parliamentary representative because he has a lot of work to do. But with your support, with your involvement, with your engagement, we will make Rosa Valley a wellness destination in Dominica. And I really want to thank the brilliance of our Prime Minister. Because if, and I want to thank you, the people of valley, for coming on the journey of Labour and always choosing the Dominica Labour Party government. Because this is how Dominica is able to develop. Many people did not have a vision of a great Dominica, but this Prime Minister had. And we are on our way to greatness. So I want to thank you for your continued support, I look forward to your questions. Great things are happening for us, let us stay united as was in the prayer because in unity, we can achieve all things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much to Honorable Dennis Charles Pemberton, Minister of Tourism. As you have heard, the Honorable Minister is very passionate about tourism and is very passionate about supporting you in the Rosa Valley to prepare for the opportunities that are here now and the opportunities that will come with the growth of the tourism sector. Ladies and gentlemen, leading the charge on communicating and engaging with the public at these town hall meetings and also leading the charge on the coordination of all of these projects that the former Speaker has told you on, we have to say tonight, the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of Dominica, and I'm very happy that this life is in the valley, Honorable Skerritt.
I want to recognize the President of the Conference. I would like to, I refer to your arm and chest this year. And we look forward to making it even better, you know, in the business. I want to recognize a friend from Waterbury, Capola, Ophor, Ocani, Octor and very wonderful community of Mon Prosper. Mon Prosper, very wonderful agriculture in Paris. Paris is often in the mountains, plants and vegetables and seasoning. I want to recognize a friend and colleague of Parrot, Honorable Dr. Irving McIntyre, Minister of the House, National Ambulance Doc in the constituency. I want to recognize a friend, colleague, Honorable Dennis Charles Pemberton, Minister for Tourism, fellow colleagues, Secretary of Cabinet, City of Public Officers, and all of us present there to see. I want to thank you profusely for your attendance. I believe that that is like this, is an important, I could say it's a loda. My wife's family's on loda, all pretty loda. But occasionally it's important where we have an opportunity as government to share with you what we're doing on your behalf and to also, and to also hear from you on your dreams, your aspirations, your suggestions, your advice. Because life is a dynamic, dynamic man. And as time changes, things have changed. And so it's important for those kinds of dynamic engagements so that we carry along with us in the journey of development of Dominica. Because all of what we're doing as a government, we're doing for the economic, for the benefit of Dominica. And therefore it's important for us to engage ourselves. And so this year, we'll be having a series of town hall meetings, going to communities, meeting the people. Because I believe interaction with the people is important part of the governance arrangement. We have a duty and obligation to listen to the people, listen to people at all times. And so we're happy to be here tonight. I will share with you a few points. And you know, we will all be, if we are honest, of course, I will show you that we have come a very long way in the positive way this time. And if we add all of those challenges that we've had, every two years or every year and a half, we will face one after another. Cross external shocks, the international financial crisis, the oil crisis, then recent time Covid. Then there were wars, the oil pact, and what is the invasion of Iraq or the invasion of Libya, all added to the challenges of the world. Spending money to replace lost infrastructure, to replace infrastructure. And what we only appreciate that if we would have been impacted by Erica, would have been impacted by Hurricane Maria, would have been impacted by Covid, not to call these three business ones. And when we speak about the extent of money that we spend to respond to this natural disaster and these external shocks, what we only appreciate what people have done with money and what we're going to pray. And not to stand in those standards, as my colleagues would have indicated to us then. We have never allowed standards to break us. We have structured international community. And tell the world and show the world what a small country with no oil, no gold, no diamonds, no silver. All we have is our people. And see how we have been able to bounce back.
Even better than developed countries have done in respect to the natural disaster. And so we have to give God thanks for this many blessings. We have to give God thanks for this. Because we all remembered, we all remembered what life was for us on the morning after Hurricane Maria. There are some who left, say that Dominica finished. All of us in this room said that it will take us twenty years to rebuild our country or more. None of us knew where to turn. All your life savings in your little house, all your life savings in your business, washed away in less than half an hour, blown away in less than half an hour. We lost everything that money could buy. But we worked together, those of us who remain in the country. And we have been able to rebuild our country to a level that is. And I've said to you before and I'll repeat to you forward because it's important to repeat things sometimes, lest we forget. Lest we forget that when Hurricane Maria hit us, we had a strategy in the government that we wanted to be the first developing country in the world to have no national debt, to be owing nobody. And we started saving monies every month from the CBI funds in a special account. And at the time the hurricane hit us, we had $389 million in our account. Had it gone before the hurricane, we would have been able to pay off everybody in the world who we owe and have 0% to debt to GDP ratio. And what we're gonna do is that we will still behave as if we were paying loans by creating an economic diversification fund and pay into that fund, on average, $125 million that we pay for debt servicing in our country, put it in the fund and use that money as an investment fund in the country to make available to the private sector, to make available to the aid bank, to make available to the government for economic diversity and development. We were hampered by Hurricane Maria because we had to save our people. We had to save our people's livelihoods. We had to restore their lives and their livelihoods and we spent this money. And when we thought that, okay, well, we are climbing on the mountain top, getting to the plateau. Here comes, here comes COVID-19. COVID-19 was worse than a hurricane. No revenue coming in, but we're spending. And Dominica was one of the few countries in the world where we were providing free treatment to persons infected with COVID-19. We did not only pay our public officers, we weren't working at the time, but we also helped many private sector businesses pay their staff, pay their salaries. Because we always felt in this party, in this government, that at all material times, we must maintain the dignity of the human being. That we wanted in difficult times that a man could take a paycheck to his wife, to his family, take care of himself and his family. And we stood the ground, as difficult as it was during COVID-19, to ensure that we not only pay public officers, but we also pay many private sector workers to ensure that they had a paycheck in the most difficult of times. And so we're pressing on. And here we are today. Because when some people speak, I get the impression that there's a speakers of Dominica was this highly developed country, every road was paved, you know, every hospital was built, every school was in place, that everybody had a home, that every child was in school, that we should have direct flights, not only from Barbados, but from China. We had a big airport and it's, and people give impression as if it was scary, took the Douglas Charles airport and make it smaller. We never had all of those. And it's important for us to say those things because schools don't teach people contemporary history. We don't teach contemporary history at our school, which is unfortunate. And our social studies texts doesn't speak about those things. And so it's important for us as parents and those in the community who are truthful to ourselves and to our country must remind us of those things. Because if you do not know your history, you will not know where you're going. And so as the Minister of Tourism indicated, we had to address the issue of opening Dominica for longer hours. And the only way you're gonna open Dominica for longer hours is by having your airport, which is your gateway to your country, open for longer hours. And the only way we could have gotten our country open in the immediate term, the short term, was to put lights at Douglas Charles and extend the runway. And there were some among us who said, "There's no, no plane is gonna land at night in Dominica." And here we are. That we don't only have planes landing at night in Dominica, but in the first time in our history in Dominica, we have commercial direct flights from North America coming to Dominica. American Airlines coming in and during the Christmas season, we had two American Airlines flights on the ground at some days of the week because of the demand. And now we have in February coming, by the grace of God, we have United Airlines coming in, in February. And we're speaking to an airline about a direct flight from Canada. And we're speaking to another airline, a direct flight from New York, JFK. And my friends, this airline is not coming to Dominica because they like Dominica. It's not the pilots and the air hostess or the flight attendants coming to see Traveler Falls. They come because they see there are opportunities to make money. And so if American Airlines, if United Airlines and the others who we can't speak to here because we're still in negotiations with them, are seeing the opportunities in Dominica, it is left to us in Dominica to reflect on the opportunities that we have and position ourselves to take advantage of the opportunities that are in Dominica and more to come. And so we always said to you in all our manifestos, in all our pronouncements, as a government and as a party, that ultimately the goal is to build an international airport. Because for us to grow the economy, we need more mouths. We need more consumption in the country. And your population will not grow at the speed at which you want it or you need it to grow to have the consumption that you need. And thereby tourism is the way to go, to increase consumption by bringing in people in. So more people, more food, more fish, more beverage, more beds, more taxis, more tour guiding, more hair braiding, more gifts, my friend Ms. Harvey, more gift selling, more hot water baths, more rabbit fests, people coming to rabbit fests in Cochrane. The number of properties in Cochrane that have been rented out to tourists on a nightly basis, more people coming in. That's what it is. And so we always said that the ultimate goal is to build an international airport, but we can't afford it. Because no, no bank in the world, not the CDB, not the World Bank, no bank in the world will give a country like Dominica a loan to build an international airport. St Vincent and the Greenwich built an airport. They got not $1 from CDB. They got not $1 from the World Bank to build an international airport. Because these banks will feel that you cannot afford it and they will feel that you don't have, you don't have the economic opportunities that will generate the income that you need to build the airport. And so we're building the airport and by the grace of God, this airport will be completed. And, and I think that we all, we all accept that, 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 that what is happening now is very good signs that if American and United can come in Douglas Charles now, you can only imagine when you have the international airport. Because, because in most countries, you will have direct flights into your country when you build an international airport. We do not yet have one and they're coming. So you can imagine what's gonna happen when you do have one. And so we are committed to the international airport. And so we speak about energy, the cost of our light bills to us as consumers of electricity in Dominica, both private and also the business community. People who run a hotel, people who run, um, agri-processing will tell you of the sheer cost of the light bill every month because your AC is on 24 hours. And you can't tell a guest, "Well, you know, my brother might be like, put AC off all the while." No. And sometimes when people go to a hotel, they abuse anything, they keep anything open and leave the doors open and so on because I pay my money and so forth, so your bill goes high. And how do we go about addressing one of the biggest costs to any business and any house owner in Dominica? That is energy. Not by buying more and more generators because you'll still have to buy more and more diesel. Because the diesel is the cost. The diesel is the cost. The Dominica must pass on the cost of diesel to you because it's a business. And so we are tapping into the God-given natural resource, geothermal. It's been a long journey, but it is a journey that we have had to stay true to. And now we are seeing literally and figuratively light at the end of the tunnel. And this is government had to invest because no private sector entity, we're gonna do the exploratory phase to find out whether you have energy there. You have to do it yourself as a government. This is why many countries who have that same capacity are not prepared to go into it because when they hear the cost of exploring, they say, "By my brother, by, best I use that money to do a road or best I use that money to do something else." And they hoping that they'll wait to get money for that. No, we are going ahead of this. And by the grace of God, this will come on stream and we'll see a reduction in the cost of our light bills there and the cost of energy in Dominica. And we'll help the environment in the process and maintain our natural oil definition and consideration. Then we talk about road rehabilitation. My friends, nothing gives me a greater headache than when I look at the cost of building roads in Dominica. There's this road in Cochrane a few years ago. Now you have a beautiful road in Dominica now, you remember the road in Cochrane? I mean, the little narrow road there in Cochrane there and so on. And people don't wanna come Cochrane because when they see here where the road in Cochrane and so on, they don't wanna come. We spent over $18 million on that road in Cochrane. It's too large. If you tell me, I believe it's too large. Over $18 million to improve. And you see, there's a saying that if you want development, you build roads. And that's what we've been doing, improving road access in Dominica. You hear in Traveler, you hear in One Prosperity, it cost us over $8 million to just stabilize the slope, the road to One Prosperity. I mean, when you do the math, my brothers, I can give everybody $300,000 and move everybody out of Cochrane. And save the money. But we understand this is people's way of life, that's where they've been. They have their family, they have their business there. And we have to invest to make life better for them, more, more convenient for them and to create greater economic opportunities for them. And so when you speak about the road from Boadiah through Castle Bruce, through the Calago Territory onto Pegwa, and I urge those of you who have not been there, take a drive. The initial contract was $127 million. We've had to go to parliament in December past to borrow an additional $103 million because of variations in the designs, the scope of works. The trough of 2022 drew toward tension, some limitations in the designs that we had to incorporate in reviewed, in revised designs and that went. So the road from Boadiah through Castle Bruce, through the Calago Territory and the Pegwa is costing us over $300 million, $230 million, sorry. And you can imagine, all of you here have many ideas of how you could spend $240 million. The road from Lubet to Bacatelle and Granby, another $120 million. All of this money has been spent in the economy of Dominica. And then we have, we have on stream, and I just got the schedule, the proposed schedule yesterday, for the construction of the Cruise Village. Another major project, another major project which will be direct foreign investment, which means that the investors bring the money from outside inside to Dominica to build this. And so there are different phases. The first phase is to extend the pier at the De Mujo Charles Boulevard to allow for bigger ships to dock. Because as you understand it, the cruise lines are making bigger and bigger ships as the years go by. So we're gonna be extending that dock, improve the facilities, the world reception facilities. Once that is completed, then we move to constructing the brand new Cruise Village, the brand new Cruise Village, um, south of the existing, um, deepwater harbor. And one can appreciate, and so when the Minister of Tourism said that our target now is to look at bringing a million tourists, cruise tourists in Dominica, some people say, "Well, how you wanna do that?" But hello, 10 years ago, we brought it up to over half a million. And if we have those facilities, and I went to Miami last year to meet, I met all of the owners of the cruise lines and the top executives to share them what we're doing in Dominica. And they were so impressed of what we're doing, they immediately directed their staff to send additional calls to Dominica. And there's one cruise line, for example, that wants to sign a 10-year agreement with us, committing to come to Dominica for 10 years consecutively. And committing, committing a minimum number of tourists that they will bring into Dominica every year. So we have business that we show for 10 years. My brother, things are happening. Thank God for that. If you ask me, if you ask me, are there things, other things I want to get done? I'd be the first to say yes. People know me, I'm very impatient when it comes to things. I want to see things done fast, quick. I don't like red tape. But we have to understand that things take time sometimes. But things are happening and unfolding and so we are committed to that. The marina, and just to understand to you, even if the marina is in Portsmouth, you here are one of the biggest beneficiaries in the entire Roseau Valley, including Cochrane, of the marina. Because when people come on their yachts, they don't just stay on their yachts, you know. They rent a car, they drive around, they even go to hotels, they go to the various things exports, they go to restaurants. So you're gonna benefit. And so these are jobs that are happening during the construction, but equally importantly, it will jobs, permanent jobs, sustainable jobs, with so many direct opportunities and so many indirect opportunities. So our call to us here in Dominica is that we must not look at the glass half empty, but look at the glass half full. Start looking at the positive side of life and to see how can I position myself with my existing business to prepare myself to take advantage of it. Because I'm telling you, my friends, that every so often, we have foreign people coming to Dominica. There's one group that came to see me sometime in November and they wanted to buy 50 acres of government land close to the airport. We will not sell it to them because that land has to stay for the Dominican people. But we must not just sit there on Facebook and WhatsApp and, and saying and complaining and, "Why are you here complaining? People come in and take our bread from us." And so this is the challenge because we're doing it for you, the people of Dominica. And you want, you need to take advantage of it. And so we come to, for example, the CBI and there are all sorts of efforts to stop the CBI. That's what it is. It's simple as that, to stop it, to end it. Now, why would somebody do that? Why would anybody want to do that to the country? That to deny, to deny you an opportunity to have access to non-tax revenue, so many things. Because if the CBI program comes to an end, are some, uh, seeking to get it to, 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 to be airport stop? The national employment program, which we put in about $5 million every month into the economy, would stop. $5 million we spend approximately on the NEP. And we know what that means to so many families across Dominica. And in some homes, you have about five or six people under the NEP, $1,000, $1,000 each. So in a home that was earning nothing... So in a home that was earning nothing, now earning six thousand dollars a month. And they don't have to pay transport because they're working in the community. And you know what they can do, they also able to do, they able to prepare meals for their children. When the children return from school, they're there to take care of their children. So you maintain social cohesion. A multiplicity of benefits of the National Employment Program. And the people want to stop this. And so we continue to do what we have to do. We continue to enhance the transparency and integrity program, the security program, and we are pushing on this. And you here in the Rose Valley also benefiting from the construction of the cable car. And I've heard myself, I have heard people who work on the cable car are praying for something. You know what they're praying for? They're praying that construction of the cable car won't come to an end anytime soon. Because things nice on the cable car, man getting money, big money. The guys who are working on the cable car are big vouchers in the place. And so while they would like to see it completed, but you understand what they mean. They don't mean that you don't want to, but busman boy, I would not continue, my brother, I mean, you know, if anyone was going there too fast. But these things are going to benefit us. It's going to benefit us, and we have to position ourselves to take advantage of the opportunities of those investments. And so there are huge employment opportunities. The cable car alone, over two hundred people. The marina, though we're just clearing the land, over fifty people have been employed thus far. So there are employment opportunities of things perfect, no. But we want us to understand Dominica in the context of what happened in the world. You all have friends and families overseas, we all watch the news, we all hear of the challenges. Just imagine developed countries are going through their own challenges, far more for us, smaller islands like Dominica. And so, my friends, our message to us is that we have to position ourselves. The young people who we send to school, who have degrees, do not rely only on just the degree. Use that to create wealth for yourselves. This is why I'm urging young people in Dominica, buy a piece of land as small as it is, whether it's four thousand square feet, three thousand square feet, five thousand square feet, buy a piece of land. Government has land sale, and buy that from government. Build a house, it could be a one thousand square foot house, it's a comfortable house, it may not be your dream home. And if you are able to build downstairs, build downstairs and rent it out as Airbnb, because Airbnb is becoming big business in Dominica. Big business in Dominica. Let us not just sit and complain, let us look at the opportunities and position ourselves. The bank has money, the credit has money, they don't know what to do with it. And I've been saying to young people, if you studied accounting at school, if you have five people who study accounting, why don't we form one group, one company? Rather than each of us trying to get work here and there, form one company. And let us consolidate our capabilities and position ourselves to advantage of the opportunities that are there. So we have to start looking at how do we make money? That's what we really focus on, how do we make money? How do we add to our daily pay, our daily pay, or salary we're getting? How do we get an extra income? So we can have savings, higher savings to use to invest. We have to be bold in Dominica, we have to take risks, we have to be able to go there. If you have money in the bank, spend the money, buy some land, build something on it. Because all you're going to do is go online and see how much money you have every day. Use it, let it make money for you. And Mark, you're a politician, just a politician talking there, you know, no business man, I'm just a politician talking there. And so we, we're happy how things are going, there are a lot of projects going on on stream. Yes, there are challenges that we have to continue to address, and we're working to addressing them. Things that we take note that concerns you as citizens, but we can only overcome them by working together. And we give you a firm commitment on the government standpoint that we're prepared to work together with you. This is why, one of the things that we're going to be looking at this year is the issue of the minimum wage. We reviewed it a few years ago, but we recognize that the issue of cost of living is affecting some families and those who are under the minimum wage, who do not have the ability to negotiate their own wage, that the government has to find a way of addressing their wage situation, to give them the increased buffer between what they're getting and the cost of goods and services. And so we will put in a mechanism in place next month, so we can advise the cabinet on what will be the new rates for minimum wage in Dominica to give those of us who want the minimum wage a better opportunity in Dominica. And so, we are committed and dedicated to the future. All of these projects, as Dr. Mark told you, they're all interconnected. Because we're working from a plan, a plan that we believe that if all, when all of them are implemented, it's going to redone to the tremendous benefits to the people of Dominica. Because what we're trying to do is to expand the economy of Dominica. When we expand the economy of Dominica, we'll increase revenue. When you have increased revenue, we're able to deliver more goods and services to the people of Dominica. And so to rely on people coming in to spend and to make money out of them rather than sticking to tax the Dominican people. And this is why we've been using the CBI funds to invest, to invest in things that will last us a lifetime. The airport will last us a lifetime, the roads will last us, the marina will benefit us for the long run, the cable car will benefit us for the long run, the homes that we're building, the hundreds of homes that we're building every year for our citizens will give them a better opportunity in life and their children. And you see, sometimes I can tell people they don't pay attention to what is housing means. It is more than a shelter, it is an asset. So you take somebody who had nothing yesterday, and you give them a house worth three hundred thousand dollars tomorrow. Immediately, they have an asset worth three hundred thousand dollars. And so we have to leverage these things at the financial institutions. You get a title, you put that in the bank, you take a thirty thousand dollars and you invest, and you use it to bring money into you. These are the things that we're trying to empower our people. And so we also have to celebrate people's success. We were, we were over, we were, we overcame, we were over, outpoured with joy and pride with Thielapha Gadsden's gold medal at the Olympics. And we have to, in Dominica, I think in Dominica, we do not celebrate people enough. We do not, we do not celebrate people's successes enough. The only way, only way you're going to become more successful as individuals is by celebrating those who have succeeded. And we have this young lady from Penville, Ms. Gilbert, who made the under-nineteen West Indies cricket team. You know, and just today I was in my constituency, was celebrating the hundredth birthday of a constituent of mine. You know, wonderful child service, wonderful lady. And I sat there in church and I'm saying, you know, and I thank God because this lady prayers for me every single day, maybe three times a day. So it's about a hundred-year-old prayer for me, I mean, I must be a lucky person, you know. So I thank God for that and so on. And so, my friends, I'm happy to be here, I don't want to be long because I want to hear from you. I could stay talking all night, you know, I have a lot to say. I have a lot to say. But I will end here too because I want to hear from you, and so we can have, I want it to be an interactive session. Thanks for coming in such large numbers. It tells us that you want to be engaged, you are eager to be engaged, and you want to be part of the process of building our Dominica, building the prosperous Dominica, building the dominant Dominica. Because at the end of the day, we're all going to be the beneficiaries of what happens in our country. So let us be positive, let us be positive, let us be constructive. Those who want to be negative, that's one of them. But I believe the vast majority of Dominicans mean well for Dominica. The vast majority of Dominicans are positive. The vast majority of Dominicans would like to see Dominica progress because this is our country. And for us, for the majority of us, this is a place that will only be called home. We can't go anywhere else but Dominica, and therefore we have to work together to create the Dominica that we want to see and we want to enjoy. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much to the Honorable Prime Minister for so clearly articulating some of the ongoing developments across the country. And there is a clear theme from all the speakers this evening, from the Honorable Dr. Rovin McIntyre, the parliamentary representative, Honorable Charles Pemberton, Minister for Tourism, and the Honorable Prime Minister. They have all said that we should prepare ourselves for the opportunities that are here and the opportunities to come with the development of Dominica. So at this time, we are at the interactive juncture of this town hall meeting. And as indicated earlier, the objective is to hear from you, to listen to your feedback. I am sure that you have a lot to say, you are here in large numbers. So we just ask that your contributions be orderly and respectful. There is a Rovin mic, Mrs. Duran Smith and Ms. Riley will assist us. So we'd like for you to stand and make your contributions. We'll take about three to five questions, PM, and then we'll have responses from the head table. We have almost the entire cabinet of ministers here, we have senior public officers. So there are a number of individuals here who are ready and willing to listen to you, provide responses and feedback. So Ms. Riley is here with a mic. I think we have three hands already at the back. Just stand, the first person is standing, there's someone on their feet. Hold on, let's get proper order. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Honorable Prime Minister, Vincent Ruhl from Luda, retired from the United States and residing in Luda. Thanks to you and your team for working relentlessly to move this lovely natural Dominica forward. No doubt, no doubt, you all are working tirelessly towards your goals and objectives in spite of the global man-made and natural disasters. I am proposing you oil the main roads to Luda, Trafalgar, Waton Whalen, considering the major tourist visitor attractions in those areas, including the soon-to-be number-one cable car in the world. And we also need an almost permanent, long-lasting patch to the road potholes. Quite often, they do jobs and within two, three days, I've been there for three months, and it's just water, it's back again. So we need to spend some time and do a better job on the potholes. They should last, it should last at least longer than that. You do have our support in these challenges towards economic development and growth. Very good job, Prime Minister and your team, God bless you all.
Thank you very much, we have a second speaker.
Good evening, PM, Dr. McIntyre and Mrs. Dennis Charles Pemberton. I just want to say, I like the town hall meeting that you have there tonight, which is a good setting for all of us in the valley. But the question I want to ask is, we doesn't see our PAL rep, no? And the same way you have that meeting tonight. I think to myself, our PAL rep should have a meeting setting like that for the valley because there are a lot of concern I would like to address to him especially. The road and the road have a lot of holes in it in Mon Prospect. And another one is the rubbish. And what I'd like, when the PM had a conference that he said that, for people to pay for their rubbish. And I accept that one because I saw the rubbish truck taking rubbish in our community today, and they could even take all, and where my house is located, and a lot of rat, they had to leave some and go. The community still remain rubbish, and when you are there, another thing about it again is it just, it bringing a lot of dogs, dogs having a feel-good time in that rubbish business there. And as soon as the truck go, those people coming back and put rubbish, the same area. You're supposed to have a day to put the garbage, but those people don't do nothing in the community. As the truck, the truck them reach far, people passing their transport and they just flying the rubbish in the same area, and that is where I live in. And when I talk, people does get vexed. I don't think we have a council to address that thing, what's going on in Mon Prospect. It not right, and what I want to say is, I would like to see my PAL rep more often. I don't see my PAL rep at all. We need to see you, Dr. Mark, thank you.
There's a gentleman here in the middle, yes, who is standing.
Yeah, good night to everybody, I'm Elvis Hector from Cochrane. And what I want to talk about is, I talking about on the behalf of the NDP. NDP in all the village in Dominica, I talking on the behalf of all of us. What I talking about is, is we who that cleaning the island, all about the villages, we who cleaning the whole island. Every drain, every kind of dirty work it have, is the NDP. It's colors from here, especially Cochrane, it's colors from here, colors from over there. So what I talking about, I thank the government for the opportunity he give to us, he give us work providing the NDP for each and everybody. But what I talking about, if they can give us a little extra for our...
Okay, let's settle down, please, thank you.
Yeah, so what I talking about, I thanks the government, I thanks the government to all what they doing. Because all what I see they doing is good, all what they doing is not bad, they doing good to us. Because without the government that we have there now, they do, they don't doing no bad to us. All they doing is good, especially when the Prime Minister talk about the hurricane. You see the hurricane that passed there, those hurricane and those disaster that passing there? All of that, I agree to all what he say, and it's true. Now, what I talking about again is for us to come together. If in case, and Dominicans always coming together. When disaster business thing, like disaster, Dominicans always coming to help and so on. But two days, they dispatch with one another, and we have to come together and do some things better about what the Prime Minister talk about. What he talking about is true, and I agree with it. So I would just want to ask him again, if he can give us a little more, you know what? Thank you.
Thank you, we will take, we will take one more, we'll take one more to the front, and then we'll have some responses from the head table, and then we'll have another round of questions, comments.
Okay, one, two, one, two, hello, hello, okay, wonderful. I like that man there because, you know, they say if you do ask, you can never receive. So we want to establish all protocols, we are acknowledging all protocols, but I have one, two, hear me, one, okay, better.
One, okay, better. So, one or two things I think can be a quick win. Minister Tourism, you mentioned all the things that we want to do, of course, excellent. But I think a quick win would be the trails. So, that is short-term and long-term. So, we can do something short-term in the meantime and then long-term, we can do that.
Can you speak into the mic? I don't think we heard you clearly. Yes, this is the mic.
Okay, wonderful, so we'll take that one for priority. So, that is that. The next thing, I heard the Honorable Prime Minister speaking about all the things that we're doing in terms of tourism and of course, CBI and an investment into the country. Do we have any ideas on manufacturing? I mean, in the next three years, you know what are going to be a serious commodity? And we have a lot of it wasting every day, alright? So, if that is something, manufacturing can be something that brings large revenues into the country. And then finally, I'm a political scientist, I did that in UE. So, we see what's happening in the external world. And I'm not sure if everybody know, but the EC is also tied to the US dollar. Is there something being looked at in terms of long-term? China, China is our friend, eh? So, we know that Brexit and everybody else is doing something there with the gold. America is oil, China and Russia trying to do their stuff on gold. Are we going to look at that long-term to see how we can best maneuver so that not only Dominica but the OECD can benefit from new partnerships? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll take some responses from the Honorable Prime Minister and the head table. We've had a few questions with regard to road patching, rubbish collection, the NDP tourism and manufacturing, so...
Well, I mean, you know, very good questions for a young man and so on. In respect to utilizing, well, sort of looking at other options for against or dollar being pegged against the US dollar. I mean, I'm not sure if anybody you've heard me before, but my view is that we in the Caribbean, we are being a little bit bolder. We're talking about Bitcoin and everybody's free to talk about it. Whereas, all of the world, that's what happening. That's, you know, this is how we're gonna create opportunities. So, we wait for everybody to do it, then we do it. We're not risk takers. You understand? Our monetary policy has been delegated to the Monetary Council. So, we have a central bank. So, this is the authority that deals with monetary policy. So, each country cannot deliver it on its own or system of payment. But for me, I believe that we have to start positioning ourselves, even if it is to explore it, to educate ourselves about it. You've seen the attitude, the positive attitude of President Trump regards to Bitcoin. There's several banks in America who are involved in this. The governments in Asia and in Middle East are involved in this. And so, there's always a reluctance for us to explore other opportunities, to address payment systems, to how do we improve on trade and the payment of goods and services external to us or even within ourselves. But mark you, the same way we never had access to cellphones, everybody gonna have their own wallet and we will pay each other, you know, through the Bitcoin arrangement. And I think we have to move in that, we have to educate ourselves in this because that's the trend we will go in. You as a young person, I'm sure you don't mind having your own wallet. You understand? So, we really have to look at this, but I am almost like a lone wolf talking about this, you know? But we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens. In respect to manufacturing, obviously, you know, manufacturing is a responsibility of the private sector. Oftentimes, when Dominica expect a government to be the one owning the factory. Governments have never owned factories really. When we had LRO, LRO was a private company, right? DCP was a private company. And so, I believe that if there's an opportunity, which I believe there is, I believe the private sector needs to position themselves to take advantage of the opportunities. Governments are there to facilitate. Governments are there to put the mechanism in place, the infrastructure. You know, what we have done as a government is to make money available for the aid bank at highly concessional rates for manufacturing. We've worked, for example, with governments to build manufacturing capacity. For example, look at the abattoir. We have built the abattoir, now we spending several millions of dollars to improve on it. Here's an opportunity in food processing. There is a captive market where people buying meat. We importing millions of dollars every year just for chicken parts. And so, we do not want to run the abattoir as a government. My hope is that a lawyer could get together with an accountant and a marketing person and an agriculture person and put together and run the place. And create wealth for yourself because you can make easily 20 billion dollars of sale by selling chicken parts alone. I'm not even talking about rabbit, I'm not even talking about pork. I'm not even talking about other remnants, just chicken. And I think it's an opportunity. But the government is investing in the infrastructure and we also, they want managing it. And we also the ones selling chicken parts, why should government be selling chicken? So, the opportunities, I'm saying, and we open to giving a management contract. Similarly, with the coffee plant. The coffee plant is there, obviously, we impacted by the hurricane. But the equipment is in there, you know, the factory is there. Come, we'll give you a dollar to run for you. The first five years, you pay a dollar to run it. So, here are opportunities. People drink coffee, the world is a coffee world. We have some of the best coffee in the world. You understand what I'm saying? We build a cocoa sweating and drying plant. We're not gonna run this thing, we want private people to run it. Cocoa is big man thing. You understand the opportunities? So, we have the fisheries complexes. We have one in Marigot, we have one in Roseau. We have one, did I miss a joke there? We have one in Roseau, we have one in Portsmouth and we have one in Marigot, a fisheries complex that we should be processing fish to sell to the hotels and to sell to supermarket and to sell to citizens. So, the private sector people don't have to build no facility, it's all built. Everything is in there, generator, food processing thing, storage, ice making, offices, everything is in there. All we need is somebody to manage it and manage it well. So, the opportunities and so forth. And so, this is where the private sector comes. When I hear people talk sometimes, what government should do this, government should do that. But there's no way in the world, I'm not aware of in America that the government owns any factory. In America, in the state of New York, for example, I'm not aware government owns any hospital just for that matter, farm or for a factory. All private. This is why Obama had to bring the Obamacare Affordable Act. So that people who couldn't afford to pay the private people, the state would help them pay the private people. You understand? So, this is where I believe that we need to have the conversation. I think and I am happy that you raised as a young man and I see the progressive nature of this question, very constructive and so forth. You look at the fellow, a bright future ahead of you there. Good luck in that, you know? Very good. The issue of NDP and so on, boy... Yeah, the man is a union for the NDP there. There's a union rep for the NDP there. But very good point, we have taken note of that. I mean, we just gave you a 60% increase earlier and I'm not sure I can give another 60% this week. But all I will say this time is that the NDP is doing a fantastic job in Dominica. A fantastic job in Dominica. You know, you see the majority of them working with a sense of pride. You know, you drive in Dominica now, there are flowers and the place is well maintained and, you know, and so, what we need to ensure, as he said quite rightly and my friend there from Mont Prospero, that people need to be involved. People need to play their part. And in respect to garbage collection, garbage collection has to be a societal responsibility. You know, I understand if you're in Roseau, you don't have a backyard. But most of us in the countryside, in the rural communities have a backyard. We should not be sending perishable items to the landfill. We have to learn to manage always because we come from an era where the only place garbage was being collected was in Roseau and Portsmouth. Right? By the city and town council. To a point where the government, through the solid waste, is collecting garbage everywhere in Dominica. And homeowners don't pay anything. But we have to pay, let's say the government. And even the private sector, you pay about 54 dollars per ton. And the manager said to me that most companies don't bring a ton of garbage a day. So, you pay less than 54 dollars as a big business. So, the whole financing mechanism is unsustainable. Everywhere in the world, you pay to collect your garbage. Everywhere in the world. So, I believe that we have to elevate the conversation. But I believe that the first step is for us to play our part at our homes, to do the sorting, to keep the perishable items at home. Dig a hole in our yard, create a compost heap, a compost space. And what we send to the waste is bottles and plastics and so they can manage it for us. And this is why the dogs are coming to eat, because they are coming to eat bones. It's a fish head. And if we don't package it properly and if we know that the truck is not coming today and we still put the garbage out, what do we expect to happen? And you have a situation in Dode and in Mero and in Saint Joe where a number of people who are not from those communities just putting their garbage there. We have to have a greater sense of pride and responsibility to our environment. Yes, Solid Waste has to do a better job, one day have to do a better job. Yes, more resources may have to be made available to Solid Waste. But even if Solid Waste would have 20 trucks, if we do not have our better or more improved practices, we'll have the same problem. And so, I have met with Solid Waste and I am, as Prime Minister, I am committed. We already started to, we're committed to providing solid waste resources. And we're doing that and to address and to have a long-term strategy regards to garbage collection and disposal in Dominica. But we all have to play our part and keep Dominica clean. I driving on the west coast and from a truck, somebody just throw a whole plastic bag of garbage. Come on, come on, I don't think the Lord likes that kind of behavior. And so, we have to have a greater consciousness. Because if you want, when we talk about Singapore, like we talk about countries that doing well and so, Dominica should have the Singapore model. But people look at the results of the model. If you litter in Singapore, it blows you getting, leaks you getting. They'll frog you. And they'll imprison you. So, Singapore will stay clean and they're not joking there. You understand what I'm saying? So, we have to play a greater role. For me, that is a major purpose, I like to see places clean. You can have a small place, but it will be clean, or country small, but it will be clean. That's what distinguishes us from the rest of the world. Because we're the nature aisle and we're not only doing for people, we're doing for ourselves. And so, let us play our part, my dear friends. Keep your garbage inside, when you hear the truck coming, you put it out. The desert coming, you put it out. But you can't be leaving in village A and you driving and you watching to see who watching and you just take up a garbage and put it by the side of the road. It's wrong. And people are just creating dump sites everywhere and then giving us, as everybody, government is the problem, oh, governments, oh, scared to give solid waste money. That's not true. It's our practices. Now, if we start now, if we now empower the police to arrest everybody who dumping garbage in Dominica and put everybody in prison, what are you gonna say now? Boy, scared it, boy, you see that dictator, they talking about there, boy, scared it, that's dictator. We've taken note of the other comments that you made, okay? We take a note and we've taken the criticism and we will fix it. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we have our second round, there was someone to the front and then we have two hands at the back and I see we have two other hands on this side, three hands on this side. So, we'll start from the front and move to the hands at the back.
Good evening, everyone. All protocols having been established. I heard the Minister of Tourism mention that we are, in terms of economic development, we are getting there in the valley. I remember as a child, I lived in Trafalgar a long time in the 70s and we never had a water problem. And if we are going to increase having our hotels and Airbnbs, I cannot be in the middle of a shower and the water is low. You know, in the valley, around this time of the year, it's cold, it's chilly. So, the relevant authorities, we need to improve on the water level situation in the valley. Number one. Number two, when you're looking at improving the economic development of a country, you're also looking at crime. And I remember for years, I used to be involved in the village council and we were looking to build a playground for our children to play. I would like to see that being established in the Roseau Valley, especially in Trafalgar. And we are in this building here and I think it's not being utilized enough for our young people. Especially on a Friday night, it can be opened. The young men and the young women can have something to do in our village. Because you find these days, we talk about wellness and we talk about mental wellness. And you know, our young people know, everything stress them out. You tell them wash plate, they stressed out, you tell them to come and eat, they still stressed out. So, we need to have more resources to help our young people to de-stress. Another thing I'm concerned about is, I heard the Minister of our PAL rep talk about the opening of the holes in complex. I am very elated about that, it's in my area, I live in the valley. But one thing I'm concerned about with the opening of one, there's another one. And we also have about a few Airbnbs there. But I do walks in the village in the morning and what I find is there's some septic that is being opened. And Trafalgar and the valley has a lot of rain. And what we're experiencing is a mosquito problem. So, we asking the relevant authorities to do something about the open manholes that is in the holes in complex to help us to get rid of some of the mosquito issues that we're having. Another problem that I see we are encountering with all the uses of our roads. I thank the Prime Minister for the NDP project. It's a very, very excellent project. My mom is a personal beneficiary of your project and I thank your government for that. But I think they can do a little bit more. I heard the gentleman mention about they getting a little bit more money. But they can stay a little bit more in the day to do a little bit more work. Especially now that you have a cable car and you have a lot of wear and tear on our roads. Because you are on the road and the road is narrow and you have a lot of overhanging trees. I'm a driver, I'm driving now. And you see a lot of overhanging trees. And you see our drains are blocked, we have a lot of water. So, they can spend a little more time to clean our drains, make sure our drains are ready for rainfall. And our roads, we have a lot of wear and tear. Right now, Trafalgar, Watton Wharf haven't been accessed. And we have those huge steaming trucks. So, the relevant authorities, I heard a gentleman mention about the potholes. Please give our roads a little more attention in terms of the potholes. I thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have a few hands at the back.
Let me say good night to the head table. A special good evening to the Prime Minister and his Minister of Cabinet and of course, our Parliamentary Representative, Dr. Irvin McIntyre. Thanks for being here and thank you and everybody for being here this evening. I also want to take this opportunity to say Happy New Year because you have a collective Roseau Valley people here, so Happy New Year to everybody. Mr. Prime Minister, I want to agree with you. I want to agree with you as it relates to our garbage disposal. I believe too, as citizens of this country, I would say similarly, that we have to manage our garbage when it comes to our own residents. A lot of people, and just like you, I see it sometimes, you drive along the highway and fellows does in local parlance, volunteering whatever is it there, stuff all over the place. And I think that needs to stop. So I believe we need to do a better management as it relates to that. I think too, that in your presentation and that of all your presenters, there seems to be a notion that they, okay, I'll put it another way. The government must understand that they have a responsibility. And that responsibility is to govern. And therefore, contingency plans must be in place as we relate to, as it relates to the domino commentary that has been coming out from the issues surrounding Hurricane Maria and Hurricane, you know, Erika and Covid. We understand that. And that's why under good governance, this is supposed to be a proactive approach to ensure that when those circumstances meet us, we are able to manage it. I want to echo one of the sentiments that I've heard here. And Dr. McIntyre, one thing I want to say to you, Mister Prime Minister. We believe, or I believe, that Dr. McIntyre would be very good in our health area and not necessarily where you put him. That's my opinion. So we have to relook at that. We have to put the pegs in the right pegs and the holes in the right peg holes. Having said that, I believe too, Mister Prime Minister, that I want to ask a specific question. While there is a massive developmental project going on as it relates to the cable car, as it relates to geothermal, my question is simple. Is that how many young people that we have from the Rose Valley that are now engaging in studies as it relates to geothermal, as it relates to cable car operations? And how many of them can we say that two, three, four, five years from now are gonna be the managers of those facilities? We would love to see that. The other issue I want to say to you and your cabinet is, it appears to me that 2025 is the only year that we have seen you and your cabinet after a very long drought. And it is concerning to me. I believe things like that must be continuous and it cannot be handpicked. It cannot be handpicked on a specific date and time. And I believe maybe, I know Mister Prime Minister, you will relook at that and probably we will see you all much more often, which we will appreciate. Sports in our country and sports in the Rose Valley, we all know and we are witnesses to it. There are those of us who, as we stand before you, Mister Prime Minister, may not be able to nod our heads too hard. And there are reasons surrounding that. But it is dead in the Rose Valley, all right? Our basketball is gone. Another thing that I want to say is that we have built, and I want to say thank you to those who have done it in terms of the basketball development facility. But I can clearly see it did not incorporate those who played basketball. I've been in the basketball business for a while and I was never consulted as it relates to the building of this two hard cement houses close to a layup. I think, I think this is not the way to go. I think more collaboration would have to be done. But again, I appreciate that because we have to learn to appreciate. But at the same time, we must be constructive in our comments. So I believe across the board, Mister Prime Minister, sports is dead. And over the past fifteen to twenty years, we have not seen sports. For matter of fact, my little boy is twelve years of age. All right, at that age, I was playing all kinds of sports. I have not, I have to take him everywhere else, but not the Rose Valley, because nothing is happening as it relates to sports. Our facilities are basically dormant, all right? So, I mean, this is a good opportunity, Mister Prime Minister, to take the good things out of this. And I hope and I pray that after our deliberation here, we'll see a massive improvement in terms of sporting facilities, educational facilities. For example, I want to echo what the young lady said as it relates to the building. You cannot have a building where we have so many young people, you know, going through so many issues, but this building is closed twenty-four seven. The only time we open it is when we have a public meeting and more so when you're present, Mister Prime Minister. And let me close by saying again, thank you for the opportunity. May we continue to grow our community. And thank you, Mister Prime Minister and your Cabinet Ministers for being in our midst this evening. Thank you.
Stand and raise your hand so that the young lady with the mic can see you. Okay, now my mic is working, thank you.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. This one, okay. PM, a special welcome to you, my Parliament. Okay, and the rest of the Cabinet. Okay, I have a few points to make, there are points and there are still issues. So, um, my first one is, Doc, you were talking about the housing project. And what we have needs to be on that housing project. Because I know there are a set of young people who really need, you know, somewhere to place their head instead of being at their parents' home, giving them stress. So, um, I think we need, we need some of those apartment buildings. Okay, um, let me see which one. We have our roads in Waterneaven.
Please speak into the mic. Can we sit along, please? Please speak into the mic so we can hear.
Um, Mrs. Pemberton, you spoke about the valley has wellness, health and wellness. Waterneaven, we have the door for health and wellness. You can come and, you know, rejuvenate, relieve stress, as the young lady is saying about for the children to have space for them to stress. But I mean, the grown-up people, all you have stress, all you can come in our spas. With our spas, the amount of visitors and people we have coming up there. But it is a shame, a big shame to see the state of our road in Waterneaven. We need that to be completed. And over the years, we've been hearing about, oh, just now, you'll get all the road, it will finish, it will finish. And we're not seeing anything happening. They started this bridging in Castle. And come on, we opened the bridge by ourselves because we need somewhere to pass instead of passing all the way to Trafalgar. You know, and fuel is very expensive. So we need our road in Waterneaven to be done, finished. And I want when PM come back up here, for him to boast Waterneaven Road like Cochrane, like Loda and everywhere else. We have that link road, that back road going at the back there. That's where most vehicles pass to go to the sulfur spas and thing. And come on, we need the holes to be patched. The tourism open and the holes were not patched. And it's not, it's not nice. And as a concerned citizen and a villager of Waterneaven, I want to see that get done. Okay, I have one more point, righties? Okay, my last point. Parliament, as the lady from Bon Prosper said, we want to see you a little more often. We love you. And you know why you are sitting here? Because of the love we have for you. So in return, we want you to show it back. You don't, you don't have to bring anything for us. We just want to see you and we can talk to you. That is all we need. Thank you.
Thank you, we have two more.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Points on this side and then we'll take responses from the head table.
Good evening to the gentleman and the lady at the head table. Can I, am I being heard?
Can we settle down, please? We would like to.
And I am happy to see my friend here, Mister Lanslord. I'm very, very happy to see him here tonight, very happy. I have a few points that I'd just like to address quickly. Firstly, food security. We talk a lot about that.
Please speak into the mic.
We are importing, we are importing thousands of pounds of carrots from Guadalupe or Matnig. Just like how we do the potatoes every year and we say, and we say, we're going to sell it to the local businesses. We stop the importation of the Irish potato and we sell our local grown. We need to do that for our carrots, for our cabbages. It's time for us to put that together. We need to have our food security set up properly. And that is where the Ministry of Agriculture comes in, okay? And it have other products, but I'm just saying a few of them. Carrots, cabbage, things like that. Or especially our veggies, because we're not having enough of that in the country. Nukamaje, top cabs, we need to start eating a little vegetables. Number two, tourism. I am, I am absolutely, I don't want to use the word Fabergas, but disappointed. Before the tourism season started, we had a meeting. And the gentleman responsible for us came, sat with us and said, he's going to fix up the area where the taxi men and them packing by the Waterneaven Sulfur Spring. Incidentally, there are lots of people here. If you come up to Waterneaven, if you don't know where the Sulfur Spring is, there's no sign to tell you this is the Waterneaven Sulfur Spring. We've been begging for that to be fixed. It may not be a national heritage site, but we can put a sign saying, welcome to Waterneaven Sulfur Spring. The tourists have to be begging us all the time, where is the Sulfur Spring? We need to fix that. That needs to fix. When we land, when, my next thing is, I hope, I hope the people at the head table are taking points. When we land in Dominica from anywhere in the United States, the only, when, what we see on the advertising board at the airport is, we see all the Trafalgar Falls, we see the other places and we only see one water spa. I think the discovered Dominica needs to do a better job. They promised to come and sit with us and they never came. That needs to fix. Okay, I'm one of the proprietors of the hot water spa, so I can speak on that level, okay? Street lights, over five years ago, we were promised that we would get street lights from Trafalgar to Waterneaven. And that is where the tourists and them walk every night. They have to put headlights in their head. We need to get that fixed. There are street lights sitting in cane field by the stadium area there. We can put a few solar lights and set up the place. The place is dark, light up the place. I'm sorry, I have so many, so many little things. Housing and the CBI funds to the Prime Minister. I am happy you made that statement that you go out there, you sell the passport, you come back, you build the house and you allow people to get it. My grievance with that is, the persons who receive those houses should be able to use that to empower themselves. In other words, I should be able to have a house and I should go to the bank and say, I need furniture and I can get a little loan and I can buy my furniture. The persons in there, they don't have that because they don't have titles. We need to get that fixed. Or we charge them for the houses and let them pay for it. We have to fix that. Because if they pay for it, it's money that's coming back in the government's pocket. Garbage wise, we need to have Dominica and sort their garbage. We can't be throwing everything in the landfill. We can start doing biogas, our waste, our food waste. Everybody packages in a separate bag. When the rubbish truck come, it takes it, it goes into biogas, the plastics go separate, the glass bottles go separate. There are a lot, a lot, a lot of things we can do different. I know I'm taking everybody's time, but I have so many, so many issues.
Right, but we need to make some time for some other contributions as well.
On a national level, parking in the city, we need to get that, we need to redress that somewhere. And I can suggest, we can fix by the bridge in Roseau. That bridge by the ministry there, we can fix there. We can put a wall by the bridge to go up towards the housing apartment. We can put a wall there. Or we can put some double decks right on that same flat. We can do something about parking. We have a lot of stuff we can do in that country, Mister, Mister Prime Minister.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you. We will take one more and then we will have responses from the head table. So this is our final in this round.
Yes, good night, good night.
Can we settle down, please, so we can hear?
I need some attention, please.
The gentleman on the floor.
I need some attention, good night. I come from the beautiful village of Cochrane. And, but I also live in Roseau North, okay? And Mister McIntyre, we need to see your presence a little more in your, in the different hamlet, at least once a month in each hamlet. And also, I would like the Prime Minister to put at least.
Can you speak up, please? I think you are very.
Yes, I would like the Prime Minister to put at least forty million dollars into the dual thermal so then we can get more electricity. And the coordinator, the coordinator is right there. Put up your hands, sir, put up your hand. You need to talk to the, yes, yes, you need, yeah, talk to the Prime Minister. Because you know why, in the, in the town hall meeting in Funkole, yes, you said that I make a very good point. So you need to talk to the Prime Minister.
Let's settle down, okay, hold on.
Let me wind up.
I don't think we are hearing you clearly. So can you just speak up in the mic? And let's settle down so we can give the gentleman the attention.
All right, let me say thank you for the Cochrane Road. It's six miles from Roseau to Cochrane. So however, now, it, six miles, so before we still take twelve, twelve minutes, so now we're taking six minutes. So let me say thank you very much for that. Also, the rabbit fest, we need, that's our culture up there. So we need at least the Prime Minister to help. And Mister McIntyre too, he could help the farmers to breed, to breed more rabbit instead of buying more rabbit from the other areas out of Cochrane. Now, the abattoir now, yes, is a very good thing. I heard the Prime Minister say now, he like the abattoir, it is more natural. Can you remember, PM? Right, so with the abattoir now, that is a good thing because twenty million dollars, you know, that could stay in Dominica. You know, instead of importing. No, but I know those that imported will be vexed because they would not like the abattoir because, you know, because they importing. Thank you very much. And Mister, Mister Carson in Aveville now, I would like him, I work in public works for twenty, twenty-five years. And during the time he was there, and I know he's an engineer. So I would like him back to the, into the Ministry of Public Works instead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. We've had a lot of contributions. So at this time, we're going to have some responses on the areas that you've raised. I think some of the key areas raised. Can we, can we settle down, please? So yes, we're gonna have some responses from the head table. We will start with Honorable McIntyre.
Thank you, thank you very much for your questions. So I'll start off with the one of water. So yes, we had five major water projects, national, nationally. And, um, you can hear me? Oh, this one? Okay, so we had, we had five major projects. These were done with financing we had to get from the United Kingdom. However, then came Covid. But let me explain something to you about Covid also. We had to build a new hospital. A hospital that was bigger than the Princess Margaret Hospital. And we did that maybe in a week's time. We had to bring on all the nursing staff, all the equipment. That was a massive project that costed us millions of dollars. The food bill, the food bill for all the nurses and all the patients was, on an average per day, was fifty-five thousand dollars. That is three meals, free of charge. So when you put all of this together and then when you, a Covid test, free as well. When you're transported to the hospital in Portsmouth, taxi, whatever the case, free as well. You're brought back to your home, free as well. That costed us millions and millions of dollars. Now, that was Covid. We had all these water projects that we had to do. Obviously, you can't do everything at the same time. Just like you run a home, you have to prioritize. Some things you can do now, some things you'll do next year and something you'll do in the year after that. So that is exactly why, out of the five projects for the water, we had to hold back on two of these five projects. And that was the entire water project for the Rose Valley to help every other village within the Rose Valley. So it's not that it's been forgotten. No, it was just, that was that particular case we had to prioritize and we took off this one. Now, you cannot, the.
Now, you cannot, the, in Mon Prosper, we had this sixty thousand gallon tank that we build in Wavison. And we pumping from Water Waven and the distribution line, so that deals with Mon Prosper. Then as for Loda, we're in the process now of getting from... Uh, you can hear me now? Okay, so now in Loda now, so the cable car pro, the cable car project is a one point eight nine million dollars to get water from Povitas to pump up to the upper part and then we'll have a tributary joining to the system we have at Loda. And the present system, we're actually getting this done better in terms of the storage and in terms of the pipes. So all of these things are going to get done. So that just explains to you why we hadn't got the Trafalgar one so far. Point taken? Yes, we have to prioritize. Your other point regarding the playground and the point that Mister Charles mentioned, is he here or he disappeared? Disappeared, I would have expected that. The, the point, the point is, the point is here, the point is here. So obviously, if you're not moving through the Roseau Valley, you won't see those things. So let me start with Mon Prosper. There's a brand new court in Mon Prosper, fiberglass backboards. The court have limo now, I have to go and pour wash the court. This is, that is part of the sporting program. To say no sports, that is definitely not true. Come down, go to Water Waven. As a matter of fact, you see all the solar lights around the playing field in Water Waven and the grass is growing because spending a second set of money to get a complete new grass surface for the Water Waven field. So that again, to say that is not happening, Mon Prosper in Water Waven is a big lie. Secondly, in Trafalgar, we're building a basketball center down there. And we're in the process of getting lights for the playing field. How can you say nothing is being done? There's a playing, the basketball court is being built. A brand new one, everybody seeing it. With locker facilities, with toilet facilities, with vending facilities. That is being done in Trafalgar as well. In Loda, in Loda, note, I'm just giving you, in Loda, we just acquired the extra piece of land for the playing field. That the agreement between the landowner and the government that was just completed, it's just a matter of gazetting. So then when we gazette it, we can continue to expand the playing field in Loda. Come on, in Cochrane, I've had discussions with Middleham to get the, acquire the extra piece of land and to get the lighting done. So as for sports in the Roseau Valley, to say that, and not only that, if his son doesn't enter the football academy of just down there in Lily Valley, there is a football academy in Lily Valley in Trafalgar. All of Trafalgar knows the football academy. So when people come and talk those crap there, we should correct them and tell them no. That is nonsense. Utter... That is utter, utter nonsense. That's ridiculous. That is ridiculous. That's why the person has disappeared, of course. But I'm just telling you in all the different hamlets, what is going on in sports and the, the infrastructure and the facilities that we are setting up. Very well. Now, let us move on to utilization of this building. We have a digital hub upstairs. We have over twenty-something computers and the screen and everything. We put out advertisements repeatedly, Honorable Grants Ministry, Digital Economy, they put out repeated advertisements for people to come and join these classes, to register, free of charge. What else you have to do? Come and take them at the home and bring them there? Register is free of charge. All of us have children at our homes that are young. Encourage them to take part in these things so that when we have these courses, they can come upstairs and be part of it. You, you cannot just, you cannot just leave everything. Here we put the, that's what we're talking about tonight. Putting the whole infrastructure and putting everything together, but you as the people, we as the people, we have to take advantage of those things. So when the government set up a digital lab upstairs, uh, yeah, upstairs, the hub. All, exactly, they're just talking, talking. All of you have children. Tell those children, join those classes. The registrations are always there and it's free of charge. You have to, you have to participate in those things. So that, so that handles this part. In terms of the roads, I agree, but let us talk about Water Waven Road. We've done from the entire village all the way to Castle. There's just a little piece missing, the bridge and then the big corner there. That's like a three point something million dollars. No, it's not like we just have money to just, at, at, in abundance. We have to do it in stages. So the first stage was to build the bridge. So that is what we did in the first stage. The second stage is to break down the big corner. So it's a gradual manner. You can't do everything at the same time. That's what I'm telling you. Even in your homes, you have to prioritize as well. So that is the next stage. The bridge was built. The bridge was seven hundred thousand. So we got the bridge built. The next stage is to break down the corner, but it will eventually be done. It's a gradual process. We do everything. In your homes, you all economize and you all prioritize. As a government, we also prioritize. But the, the urgent thing was to make sure that bridge was done before the tourist season. And we definitely did the bridge before the tourist season. The next steps will come when we do this bridge. Charles mentioned resilience. There's no other country in the world you talk about resilience but Dominica. Unless if you're not living in Dominica. Everywhere in the world, they talk about Dominica and resilience. The Prime Minister mentioned, we had three hundred and ninety-something million. That is saving for any day. That is why we could rebound from Maria. I'm lost. If you cannot understand that, I'm lost. This is, this is how it is. We actually have a vulnerability fund. Every single, we put half a million from the CBI into this. This is what you call resilience. Our FSU, that is the Financial Services Unit, we just came first in the region. This is financial resilience. In terms of our health, our infrastructure, this is resilience. That is why we have creed. That's why we two guiding documents, the NRDS and the CRRP. Dominica, when you talk about resilience, you have to mention Dominica internationally. Come on. So to come here and say that, we have to prepare for those hurricanes and prepare for those things. We've been doing that all along. That's what creed did. That's why we could rebound from Hurricane Maria. That is why the world references Dominica for resilience. And not just relating to infrastructure, relating to health as well, relating to that education as well. This is the bigger picture. But as I told you, ignorance is the greatest poverty. Let's move along. Then if we talk about, um, we spoke about cricket. Mon Prosper have a cricket team playing in, in your league? Mon Prosper Cricket Team is in your league? I'm a member of that team. What are you saying? I'm a member of the Mon Prosper Cricket Team and we played in the league, right? So come on, Cochrane has one of the best, Cochrane number three in the football league in the world. That's Cochrane. This is Mon Prosper Cricket Team. This is John Academy over there, Football Academy. Come on, let's be honest, let's be frank. No, no, wait, 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 wait. Right, so now then, what's housing? As for housing, I mean, come on, housing, let us look at it. We have these twelve apartments which will be given out within the next month for two. Twelve apartment next month for two. We have another sixteen three bedrooms over there. Very shortly will be done by the end of the year. In Mon Prosper, how many people have got? And the lady who said she wasn't seeing me in Mon Prosper. I'm tired of being at your home. Where is Ife? Ife? No, no, no. Where is Ife? 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 At your home? Ife, Ife in my office? Ife in my office at Hallsborough, often? After all, don't do that. Don't do that, Ife. I come by your home on a regular, or say you want to see me more? Oh, okay, now you're talking. If you want to see me more, that's okay. But after all, that's how much you love me. That's how much you love me. Thank you, thank you. Okay, then we come in. Uh, where was we? Um, Ernest, I think you had some excellent points. In terms of signage, I agree with you. Yes, in terms of signage, I, I agree with you on that one. In terms of the food security and all of that, I also agree with you on that one. And, um, so yes, these are areas and the Ministry of Agriculture is fully aware and it has been done. In terms of the lighting for this road there, you're a hundred percent correct. That will be done. Now, coming back to prioritizing things. Now we're doing the housing here in Trafalgar. Obviously, when we're done, we move to our next village. It's as simple as that. We cannot do all at the same time. And everyone knows here, the Prime Minister knows, Minister of Housing knows, Water Waven is next. It's as simple as that. Water Waven is next. But let us complete this one. We don't want to just bite more than we can chew. So we'll, after here, we come into Water Waven. So basically, we're getting everything done. So I, I appreciate your questions. I hope I've answered, I answered the housing. I answered your, I answered yours, well, I debunked the sports nonsense. I spoke about the resilience part. We spoke about the utilizing the building, the water I explained, the playground I explained. I think we pretty much understand what's happening now. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable McIntyre. I think we are going to, we said we will be here from six to eight. We are a little bit above our time, but this has been a very interactive session, so we've allowed you to provide feedback. We will take two more, um, points if you, from individuals who we have not heard as yet. Please stand, if you would like to speak, please stand so that we can acknowledge you. So we have one, two, three, four more points and then this will be our last round.
Good evening, everybody. I'm from Cochrane and I, I want to thank the PM for our beautiful road. But I have one concern. We need some streetlights. And we need some streetlights. This road is a, a very great job, but we need some streetlights to make it super great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, good night, everyone here. Um, a special good night to my PM and my pal rep. Um, Julie Richards from Cochrane. Um, in order, PM, for us to get a piece of the pie. Of the piece of the pie in the tourism. Our road to the Middleham Falls is very, very, very bad. After, um, Maria, I, I don't even think people can even pass in walking. We did, the NEP worker, workers, we did something there by opening the drains and so, but we really, really, really need some help there. Okay, um, for our rabbit festival, we are hoping this year to be big and great again. We just got a, a pelletizer machine that we can help ourselves in making our own rabbit feed. So less cost for the rabbit, um, the rabbit farmers. And I just want to say it was a very, very, very good meeting and I appreciate it. And just happy new year to everybody and hoping that we'll have some more. And we are hoping to see you in Cochrane soon.
Thank you very much. And we're looking forward to the Rabbit Festival. There's a young lady at the front. I believe this is the last. Oh, and there is one gentleman at the back. Who will be our last speaker. No, there is someone on their feet, someone is standing, she's been standing for a while.
Good night to the head table and everybody present.
Speaking to the mic, yes.
My request is writing legislation, enforcing legislation. Read the garbage disposal like, for example, just around me, I have a problem and my problem could be so simple by the people keeping their garbage at their home, one. And two, when they dispose, ensure that their, their bins are, are closed. Then the other thing too is that, um, we know Dominica, how we go about developing communities. But then when you have those, those developments and people do not, do not build on time or take years to build. For example, I am living in an area now for, I'm going to say about thirty-two years now. And then my neighbor was there before me, but he hasn't built yet. And then there's a development below and vegetation because, because I'm on a mission now to get somebody to cut some bamboo from because the bamboo my, in my neighboring lots below me are way above my roof now. And we know what could happen with a little fire like I'm shown. So I don't know, so what I'd like to see is to some, there should be some development officer to enforce those kind of legislation. Both for garbage and for overgrown, overgrown those lots.
Okay, thank you very much. So our, yes, the young lady was standing in front and the gentleman with the cap at the back is our last speaker.
Okay, good evening to everybody. I would like to say good evening to the Prime Minister as well as his member of cabinet and also my pal rep. My name is Aneta Johnson. I'm a mother of four. This is my second kid and, um, I'm also a preschool teacher for eight years. I'm doing it alone for five years and it's very, very hard for me being alone. A lot of people would like to assist, but because the money is so slow, so small, nobody is actually applying. So I'm asking for the kind intervention of my pal rep, whether he could assist me some way or the other because being alone with a population of ten babies and I'm alone at school is very hard because I have to give love, I have to discipline, I have to feed and at the end of the day, I still have to clean. So it takes a lot, having to leave and then to go home and take care of what is mine. Plus, my parents are ill, I have to give them a lot of attention. So I'm asking whether he could intervene in terms of my pay at least because it is very small. Actually, it's my rent. The pay that I'm getting is my rent, one. Two, I would also like to speak on the behalf of my parents. This is my mom. My dad should be the second eldest or the eldest man in the community now. Presently, he's bedridden because he has a tremor and he has a pain cloak. My mommy thanks to the government, they assisted her well. She did a heart surgery in Barbados just after Erica. She's here with me, I'm very happy. So I want to say thank you very much for that. But again, my parents were the last people to leave the primary school just after Maria. And presently, they don't have a home of their own. And my dad, retirement money is what they have to be using to help them because presently they are renting, which is very hard. My dad is eighty-one, my mommy is in her late sixties. So I'm just asking again for your kind intervention, whether you could assist them in some way or the other because they have a small lot of land, or a small plot of land, where at least they could have a two by two to help them. Because just about two weeks ago, they are finding out from the landlord that the house was being sold and they are in the house. So it's stressing out my mom, my daddy's bedridden is also stressing out. But they do have a piece of land, a plot of land whereby something could be done for them. Help them out very much. So that is just my points. Please, if you could intervene, that would be nice. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. So our final speaker is at the back. Please speak into the mic.
Good evening to the head table and good evening to everyone. Um, and, um, Honorable Prime Minister, good evening to you, sir. I am from the community of Loda and, um, I'm also the chairperson of that village improvement committee. And about two, a few years back, I remember you saying at one of our community meetings that you're going to adopt the community. And, um, I must say that, of course, we've, you know, some of the developments we have been seeing in the community in recent times, we have been seeing some of that. But presently, we are facing a dilemma with our water system. And that started from the ninth of February to the fourteenth of October. And I must say that all these times we have shortage of water, no water, it has been recorded. So that is why I can tell you from the ninth to the fourteenth. Um, I know Dr. Mack have been trying his best and, um, also Miss Mara St. Rose because from time to time, I would be, you know, calling them when the community has no water. Also, Mister Prime Minister, a tank, from my understanding from the elders, it was built in nineteen fifty-nine. So then that tank have served and passed the time. And after Hurricane Maria, we had a... And after Hurricane Maria, we had a huge boulder in the, in the water tank, of course, which compromised the community from having water. But with the good heart of the villagers, within two days, water was restored back to the community. Now, I say that, this dilemma, Mr. Prime Minister, I, I'm not too sure how you can get involved and assist us in fixing that, because we have written numerous letters to the WASCO, and we have gotten no response from the WASCO, which I think it is total disrespect though for, you know, an entity like this, and writing from, receiving a letter from a body which represents an entire community, and not responding at all. That shows bad on the manager of the water company. Again, compromising that, eighty-five percent of the pipes, presently, they are not good. So we have something really to, on our hands. And I would really, 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 really like your intervention in that together for our parliamentary representative, to see how we can address that, because water is life. And once there is heavy rains, the taps, you find pieces of metals, the strainers have to be cleaned, and it's a problem. It's a real, real, real problem. And from time to time, persons would complain about stomach issues. So please, Mr. Prime Minister, I am asking, I am begging, on the behalf of the community, please assist us. And if possible, when that is being done, the upper part of the community, that's on the road to a freshwater lake, is being heavily populated now. So that part of the community, water could be added, or the, the, the homes of they could have pipe on water. Once again, um, thank you for the opportunity, and good night.
All right, thank you very much. So I believe the Honorable Prime Minister will provide some responses and closing your bags. Thanks.
Well, I, I think, Albert, I think you have more knowledge about the water interventions than anybody else. Because you'll be aware that with regards to the existing water, water system, I mean, this big stone you talk about was removed, we extended the catchment, we've run new pipes. And you're also aware that there is a project for about one point eight million dollars. And that project will be financed by the cable car people to enhance the water supply system. There was a site visit, I think you were part of that site visit, and so you're aware of it. So I don't think you should speak as if you don't know, because you were part of these processes, you know, so. But you were part of this, and, and I can say to you that we are absolutely committed to the water system. We have spent, as a government, um, I mean, an inordinate amount of monies to improve water systems. I mean, all the water systems were basically washed away by Maria, we had to spend quite a bit of us to restore them. The reality is, what we're trying to do is to make our water system more resilient. They open to the elements, you have to run pipes from the mountains down to the valleys of people's homes. There are mudslides, there are landslides, pipes get washed away. The catchment area leaves and so on, so it blocks the system, we have to assemble up in the mountains to clear it. It's a very difficult system, um, process to manage the water supply in Dominica. You understand? And, 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 um, we have been, we have done, in my view, a dramatic amount of work to make, to bring portable water to homes in Dominica. This is, every time you have a storm, you have, you have an impact. Um, you'll have a mudslide higher up the, um, the, the catchment area, it will dirty the stuff, so it's a, it's an ongoing process. But we do have a proposed permanent solution, which you're aware of, for Loda Water System. Um, similarly, with regards to Trafalgar, um, you know, this, we have a design for the water system, we know its challenges there, and we are on to it. But as the par rep said, we can't do all of the things at the same time. We spent a significant amount of money to improve the, um, more prosper water system recently. Um, so it's an ongoing base, ongoing process, um, and we give you the assurance that we will, we will, we'll certainly continue to do what we have to, to, to ensure that the quality of water and the consistency of water supply is there. But you, you always be hampered from time to time by natural disasters, and so we have to be mindful of that and so on. But there is a project, I have a copy of this project, it's one point eight million dollars, um, that we intend to spend there to, to improve our system. There were some challenges with land ownership. There were some challenges with regards to the design of it, and whether it's going to impact, um, some of the parts of the village. And all of us still have been taking into consideration the WASCO, the community, the par rep was present, um, the cable car people, to, to ensure that there was a collective approach towards defining the problem, but also defining the solution to the problem, so that the cable car and all of the residents of, of Loda would certainly be properly supplied with, with, with portable water and so on. And of course, I think it's among yourselves in the community to continue engage yourselves on this particular project. We have, I have taken certainly, I have taken note of all of the comments made, all of the suggestions made, we respect them. Um, we don't have any real arguments in them, except in circumstances where the facts have to be corrected. And, and I, and I think that when we come to engage communities, it's important that we speak truth to power. You know, we have to say as it is, I, 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 I am not here to allow anybody to show out anything for me, tell me as it is, that's why I'm here for. But, but, but so I have taken note of the comments that people living in the constituency have raised. Um, one or two people who do not live in the constituency have raised points that are not factual, and the par rep has dealt with that. Very decisively, in a, in a dispatched manner. Um, but the issue of the, of the portals, you know, I have the same concern as you. We have gotten so accustomed to smooth road in Dominica, that whenever we see a portal, we have a problem. Um, you know, we move, we are, we have, we moved, and that's it, you know, we move away from the point where you had more portals in Dominica than surface road in Dominica. And so I myself, I can tell you, whenever I see a portal, I, you know. Um, but part of the challenge we have is that the government does not have a, doesn't have, it doesn't have an asphalt plant of its own functioning. And therefore, we have to rely on private sector supply of asphalt, of, of beauty men. But what happens with these companies, they go on Christmas break very early. And so they're reopening, they may have reopened or reopening this week, right, today. When, when reopen? Today. And they'll be supplying with, with asphalt, so that we can come in to do national patch across Dominica. Um, I can tell you what I do as par rep. Um, and on the, from Blenheim, which is on, not my constituency, but it's a national road, we mobilize people on the patch road, so we ourselves there as residents. I don't think we should wait for the government to come and patch a hole for us. If there's a hole, let's get half of our cement, we have tarish in, in, in area, and we're on the patch road until asphalt comes. So we, we have to do a little more for ourselves. I mean, the gentleman here talked about a sign, a signage. I mean, you take a, you take a piece of wood, you carve, you carve, water wave will falls in there, you paint it in red, and you put it up there. So I'm saying, um, I think, I mean, we, we spoke here, for example, and, and Mr. Charles highlighted it about the use of the facility. If we come to build a facility, we build it for you, and therefore, it is you to determine how you're going to make use of it. And that's why we need to put groups in place, and have activities. It's open, it's, it's for the public, it's for you. It's not the government's own, it's, it belongs to the people of Trafalgar, the people of the Roosevelt, Roosevelt Valley constituency. And so we would like to make use of those facilities, similar to sports. People tell us they want a basketball court, we give it to them, then nobody plays. They have a playing field, nobody's playing on it, but they want lights. We put lights, it's not being used. A hundred thousand dollars later, and there's a hundred thousand dollars I could use for something else, to build a house for somebody. And so we have to make use of the investments that the government puts in, into those communities, so that we can build upon it, and so forth. Um, tourism, a number of points we raise about tourism and some outstanding meetings, the minister has taken note of that, and will ensure that the people coming to, to have the meetings, if you want to follow up, and to deal with some of the concerns that you have where tourism is concerned and so on. Okay? Um, but realistically, there are no disagreements among ourselves. Um, your concerns are your concerns, and we respect that, and we've taken note of them, and we will act in this, on this patch to solve some of the small problems that you have pointed out. These are really small problems that we can deal with in, in, in quick fashion and so forth. But the key is for us to work together towards addressing them. Okay? To work together towards addressing them. We have to work with the par rep to address them, and, and, and to ensure that we can get things going. So I want to thank all of you for being there in such large numbers. Clearly, you were, you were hungry for town hall meeting. And we will come back to another part of the constituency at some, at some point, uh, to see you. But let us continue to be engaged, let us be involved in the community, let us play our part, let us be constructive and positive. Dominica needs all of us to work together for the greater good of the country. Um, so this, this is very important. And the, and the fact is too, we also, as a government, need the encouragement. Um, I think we have to appreciate the fact that running the country like Dominica is not easy. And just reflect on the challenge that you may have at your home, you, your wife, and two children, and the challenge that you have to undergo. So just understand if you have to multiply that by so many things, and the competing priorities that you have with limited resources. We don't have a largest, neither can reprint money. We have to, we have to, we have to, we have to earn the money, and we have to borrow to, to make things happen. And from time to time, priorities change. You have money saved to go on a vacation, or to put an extension in your house, your child gets into an accident, um, his leg is broken, the doctor charges you eight thousand dollars to fix his leg, what do you do? Do you put the extension on your house, or do you go on vacation, or do you fix your son's leg? Priorities. And so this is what happens, it is not that we do not want to do these things, because something else came up that we, that we have to give priority to, because you have limited funds. You don't have funds that you don't know what to do with. And the reality is, Dominica, most of Dominicans don't pay any form of direct taxes. We, we pay vat with the consumption tax, but we pay based on consumption. We pay based on how much we buy. And, 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 and so with regards to income tax, there are many, many Dominicans, none of body in tourism pays income tax, nobody in agriculture pays income tax, uh, many small businesses don't pay income tax. So it really is a few working people in the public sector, in the private sector, um, and in the private sector who salaries alone, who pay, who pay income tax, and the tax threshold is as high as forty thousand a year. So the first forty thousand of everybody's salary in Dominica, you don't pay any tax on that. You understand? And this is why, what we're trying to do in the government is to grow the economy, put those major infrastructural projects in place, invest in agriculture, invest in tourism, in, in, invest in energy, so that we grow the economy, and then you have a resultant, uh, more revenue in the country that will not cause you to have to increase taxation on the citizens of Dominica. And so this is what, this is what we're doing, and so on, and more people coming in, and the Minister of Tourism indicate to you, last year, most tour visitors came in ever, and more cruise visitors came in ever. And one can only imagine that when those, when international airport is completed, the marina is completed, the cruise village is completed, the geofarm is in place, you, you understand where we're going as a country. And in respect to education, it is left to us to ensure that if we're going to educate our children, that we prepare them to take advantage of the opportunities. I hear a lot of people talk about agriculture, be my last point tonight. A lot of people talk about agriculture, what, what we should do for agriculture, and so on, and so forth, and, and, and sometimes a lot of people talking about agriculture, they, they kneel long like this. You understand? But the point is, none of us want to send our trainees to do, to do farming, but we expect to grow food. So who's going to do it? If we're pointing at somebody else to do it, who's going to do it? Who is going to go to do the farm labor if nobody wants to, works on the farm? Who is going to grow food if nobody wants to be a farmer? How are you going to grow the food? So when we're speaking in the country, and I say so with greatest of respect, because we are friends here, and we have a conversation, that we have to do some introspection. What is my contribution to what I'm talking about? This is why in respect to garbage collection, it's good to say, well, okay, solid waste, solid, 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 solid waste. But what am I doing? Am I contributing to the problem? And what do I need to do to contribute to the solution? So understand where I sit as Prime Minister, and when you have to be juggling different things to get things to happen. And, and, and but it is important that while there may be some little things that are, that are troubling you, we have to remain true to the bigger picture. These transformative projects that we're working on, these things will help solve the little problems that we have. But we can set this big agenda aside because we have little problems. Because little problems will multiply, because you will not have the means of addressing them. And so let us understand that progress is, development is a, is a process, is a process, just like life. You, you will only stop developing when the world comes to an end. You'll only stop having problems when you're dead. And so every day you wake up, something you have to deal with, that you're not prepared to. The Bible tells us a man born a woman is full of trouble. So a country is full of trouble, full of challenges, that you have to navigate around and deal with. But I, but I am, I am, I am happy that we're on the right track, and, and I think we just have to continue to do what we have to do. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I am so happy to see all of you here. And, and I will, I will make some time to come and see you personally, along with your par rep at some point, okay? To come and see you. But the rabbit fest, I'm going to cook, I'm going to do a rabbit stew in the rabbit fest. So I'm going to have my own stall, and I will show you guys how to cook a rabbit and so on. Let me tell you something. When you say I do the rabbit stew, my brothers and sisters, I can stew the rabbit hair in nothing, and you will know, you know. You see? You see, for a rabbit to have flavor, what I do, I do not scald it, I burn the hairs. So I keep the skin, and it gives you that nice flavor. But when you scald it, rabbit meat is very difficult to cook, but you scald it, it becomes more difficult. And when I stew the rabbit meat, I don't use all the, all the seasoning, all this cube, all these things, I, I use local seasoning. The only thing I may add to it is a little curry, because I like to give a golden stew. Thank you very much. God bless all of you. God bless our country, Dominica. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm sure you will be looking forward to visiting the Honorable Prime Minister's booth in Cochrane at the next Rabbit Fest. PM, I hope you have enough rabbit stew for everyone who's here, and everyone who is listening, who will come. Let me just take this opportunity to thank everyone who has joined us here tonight in person in Trafalgar. The response has been overwhelming, so overwhelming that we did not have enough space for all of you. But we are very happy that you came, that you are here, and that you participated fully. We are very thankful for your interaction. I also would like to recognize all of those who have been listening online via the radio, the media is here in full force, DBS is here, Kyrie, and we have been streaming live on the Honorable Prime Minister's page, and also on GIS. So let me thank the members of the media who are here. Of course, special thanks to the Honorable Prime Minister, the parliamentary representative, and the Minister for Tourism who presented tonight, all the members of Cabinet who are here, and all the senior public officers as well who came in this evening. We are here to interact with you, we have some light refreshments. And finally, our next town hall is scheduled for Salibear on January twenty-ninth at six PM, for your information. So thank you very much again to everyone and we wish you a blessed journey home. Thank you.